Okay, we got it?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna call me in to order is Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Any missed reports?
No.
Okay, do you have any new?
No, sir.
Upcoming needs or events? Okay, any commission comments? Any bids and contracts? New business budget hearings, 8:00 AM, Judge Green, Judge Walker, Donna Jordan, Paul Butler, and Jessica. So anyway.
There you go. Carrying a lot of hats today. Judge Green last night, obviously you guys, he was over here yesterday.
Yes.
And I know that Jay, although this is the, Jay was transitioning when most of our budget was already taken up. I understand that it's basically as is at the time. We do not know the COLA and the insurance costs, but we don't have any new requests or issues or exceptions or for any of the departments. Holly had one yesterday that you guys talked about, but Mark Green and Holly.
Yeah, so I mean, the only difference, I updated like any communication cost or internet cost that we knew, but I mean, there's, there's no changes versus what they've adjusted and everything.
I like that.
We did this all back in November.
Yes, we did.
In November pretty much, so.
I think in August.
Just kind of a formality at this point.
Yes.
I think it's good to keep, put on record that the COLA is, we now know if the health insurance, whatever has trickled up.
Yes.
If there's agreement, then that's what it should be.
And in the case, as we talked yesterday, in the case if there have been any title changes, salary changes, things of that nature, those will all be reflected here. I don't think that's the case for the courts and everything.
County positions, yeah. Happy to give any other reports, but you guys are on budget, so.
You know, maybe court security, we have subsequently renewed a contract.
Yes.
We looked at other options.
Yeah, yeah, and I've, I've talked to Green about that at every step and I, yeah. The day that, I think there was a, a meeting or a bid process or something, but the day that that was on the agenda, I couldn't attend, but we talked about it.
We stayed with the same provider.
Yeah.
And a small inquiry.
Yeah, and I can get with Jessica, that was yesterday that that was approved and everything.
Thank you.
Good. If we want to clear this so quickly, we're way ahead of some schedules.
Do we want to jump ahead to like county commission? Or do you want to wait for the sheriff or jump right into there?
Jeff just texted Mark to see if he could come on over.
Okay.
So I don't know, I mean, we could do the county commission.
On page 34.
Okay.
Then I briefly talked with Debbie about it and she was good with all the information that Jay put in there. The ARPA stuff all should be winding down at the end of '26, so this should be the last time on the budget to the ARPA funds.
Yeah, so on ARPA, there's one or two projects still out there that they have '26 to get paid, and then after that, everything is interest earnings, and there's not the restrictions on the interest earnings from ARPA. So those could be moved into just the general revenue fund if we choose to do that next year and everything.
Well, that could be booked with one more entry in December to record December interest.
It's still, it's still earning, yeah.
Interest. Does it show up here with that number? For next year, it's, that's not it.
Isn't the interest earned?
Yeah.
Page 35.
On page 36.
36.
About $50,000 is what we were assuming.
That take it makes your job just a little bit easier to flip it out of there and flip it where it's a general or whatever, which is one less sub account that he has to account for because of the rule with, with our.
And then there's the opioid settlement that, you know, at this stage, we're still assuming $100,000 a year receipts there, which there may be other opioid settlements coming that could be larger. We just, we don't know what that is at this stage.
Newspaper says there's more, there's about to be another huge one settled.
Yes, that new settlement has not been built in.
I was gonna say the MAC conference, I can't remember who I was talking to, and they said that there was another huge settlement coming down.
And it'll be over maybe anywhere from seven to 15 years, stream.
Yeah, it's, yes.
It's that one that's owned by a family.
Is it Purdue or whatever? Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, on the, the items under the, the commission, the domestic shelter, ARPA, the 911 wireless and the opioids, there's no real change from previous years or, you know, additions or anything there, so. Mark, I think they're ready for you if you want to jump in.
I absolutely have no questions. I'm 100% good with what you, what you budgeted.
Again, the only real change is we looked at communications and internet cost and just reflected those, what we worked with Brian on what we think those will be for next year.
I appreciate you, yeah. Thanks, Mark.
Mark, an update with them maybe on the reconciliation of bank accounts from the past and everything?
2023 has been reconciled, she's on 2024, says she'll probably have it done by December, the end of December here, and then she'll start on 2025. But she did get 23 done and 24 is almost complete. So, take somebody that can audit books to do a good job. We're paying her dearly, but she's done a great job for us, so. And I'm probably gonna continue to work with her even afterwards for a while. So you should have your numbers by the time that.
Light at the end of the tongue.
Working, Sam, I'm working.
It seems like it's gone.
You got handed, handed a bunch of mess and you gotta figure it out and it's coming, so. But we're doing our best with it, so. And I do have some part-time people coming back here on my part-time stuff during Christmas break, so I'll start using some of that budget up again. We're slowly cleaning the basement out and the attic, so. That's all I have. Go, make it.
You can get empty files, I realize it's a special.
Yeah.
I, I think.
It's just getting them out of there.
No, I'm ready to get them out of there.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Brian's on 50.
I'm sorry. Feeling better? I'm, I'm getting there. I went to see our nurse practitioner yesterday and she really helped me out.
Page 50, I think?
Yeah.
You don't look any different.
Well, there's only so much you have to work with.
So you need something printed out from your box?
Yes.
I was trying to work on that when Jessica came and got me, so is that something that you printed?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, it's, it's, I'm gonna have to work with it. It's not printing out for some reason.
Okay.
User error. Sorry.
I only say that to you.
That's because I'm always trying to control all delete.
So I went ahead and just, I went through and did a kind of a back study of our expenses over the, since 2021, and before we kind of get into 2020, look at it for 2026, and, and on page, page two, the graph that's there, it kind of shows that in pictorial representation.
Right, do you have an extract?
Oh, no, that's, okay, actually, I'm sorry, Jay, I shouldn't run there. So, so anyway, the salaries obviously have increased since 2021 with added staff and different pay increases and such, but what we're seeing the biggest increases are is within our service contracts and our internet usage. So internet costs have gone up dramatically over the years, and you can tell on the chart, in the middle kind of of that chart is where the internet and the equipment service contracts hits, and it's, obviously it's just, you know, gone up tremendously, and you can say that's due to, you know, changes in internet providers and their approach to what they're charging. So we had different locations that went from paying $200 and some dollars a month, paying over 800, things like that. So I've been working with Jeff, he's, I've been kind of telling him all along how I'm trying to get those costs down, and I'm able to do that quite a bit.
I just had one recently, it went from 800 a month back down to 200.
Yeah, which was Pringer Center, and then, so, so anyway, I'm trying to do the same thing out at the Health Department as well, so hopefully we'll get that taken care of. The equipment service contracts, if you look on page, yeah. So on, on page three, I must never have minded somehow, but on page three is the general, how our budget looks, so I don't know. But anyway, if you look at, you know, list our salaries all the way down through our cybersecurity grant, which I've been told that we're gonna get that check any day, so it's gonna be about, what does that check go speak, 140 or something?
140 is what we were projecting.
Yeah, and so we've been using that grant to help offset the cost of these increasing contracts, but it hasn't hit the bank yet. So, so anyway, if you go to the next page, it's actually the detail of the equipment service contracts, and so I went, I always go through all of those to make sure, you know, that we're paying what we're supposed to and nothing more. And based upon how everything is being driven to a subscription-based price model, that's kind of how it's going. So, you know, with, you've got, you know, your BSNA, you've got some server hardware remains in there, Patagonia, which is Health Department, DevNet, which is pretty much county-wide, you know, you got some things in there for IT that Joel does, Health Department-related. Most of this, you know, comes, you know, the biggest part of this comes in on our managed network security program. So we've talked to that over, I talked about that over the years, and so, you know, we went from, you know, pretty much doing it in-house, which was, probably met the need at the time, to like this more advanced approach that has, you know, a built-in bundle that comes along with the 24/7 security monitoring, the off-site backup storages, all these different things that, that are now occurring, disaster recovery, we've, we've, which basically what that does is, is allows us an off-site location to recover our servers should anything catastrophic happen with this location. Another big change this year is our existing mail server basically is in-house, and Microsoft's decided to do away with that approach. And so now we have to do everything subscription-based, which means that instead of having an on-premise server where we just kind of maintain it and stuff like that, we have to pay annually per user to have access to the Microsoft email and depending on the license structure that we purchase, also the updated office products. So, and that's definitely a change that, we saw that coming this year, but up until August of this year, we didn't know what our approach was gonna be on that, and so when we sat down with Huber and kind of talked through it, decided that the best thing to do is just go ahead and make this plow jump. So we're right in the midst of all that right now. So, and, and like, all these things are not, are not thought up by IT so much as they're in response to what's happening out there in the industry, so. And this is state, this is city, this is county, I mean, this isn't anything particular to Cole County, it's just, I guess you could say it's on turn, so. Pretty much, I mean, that's, that's it. I mean, that's, we, we picked up, for the senior tax program, we picked up therefore software maintenance. So, so what that does is, is whenever we were approached to come up with a solution to help, you know, use technology to help the collector's office with the, and the commission with the senior tax program management, we had to have some way to store all these, securely store all these documents and things like that. So we had purchased the, the therefore document management system, but we had to add on some modules and different things to expand its capability, and so when you, anytime you expand the capability of a software offering, it also causes an increase in maintenance. So, so that therefore software maintenance has gone up dramatically just because of the senior tax program pretty much, so.
So, Brian, that, that cost is in a sense being borne by IT?
Right, that's the way it's, it's, it's in there right now. Yeah. Now, I did talk to the collector about helping offset some of that, and he said he would be willing to do that, so.
Is, is that different than, let's say, the, the assessor needs something for DevNet, that's on his budget?
Mm-hmm.
The collector needs something for senior credit, which we, maybe unjustly thrown at his feet, but, but you're, you're, you're picking up that in a sense.
Correct, yeah.
I see some inconsistency.
There, yeah, yeah, there are, and the inconsistency, inconsistency kind of, I apologize for, I'm gonna lose my voice here, but, but I think the inconsistency, inconsistency lies in, you know, who's really responsible for the senior tax program. So there was definitely some discussion, right, for, for who's ultimately supposed to bear the burden of the cost of that, you know, getting that program off the ground. So from an IT perspective, you know, my, my mission was just to get it accomplished. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm just, you know, somebody could make the argument as the commissions voted two to one to do this, and then the commission should have to eat that.
Well, that's, that's, that was one line of thinking, right? So, but, but yeah, so something else we're seeing too is, I'm sorry, do you want to?
Well, I just, as long as we can track it, that's all I'm concerned, not all. It's one of my concerns is, well, this is a great program and it was so easy, no, it wasn't easy.
Right.
And it was, and it was, had some expense.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it wasn't an easy thing to do, and then we really didn't get a firm marching order on until late spring. So to come up with, you know, a process and then digitize all that with software and everything within six weeks was, was something else. So the whole, the whole team worked on all that. I mean, we had a lot of committee meetings and stuff like that to make that happen.
I think if you scan certain tax bills that have gone out, some of them have a senior credit line with nothing in it. Looks like they're ready to put a number there in '27, they being the collector's office.
Could be, I, I haven't seen that, so, yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah, and then, so, something else, and Debbie has like, no Debbie, she has the breakout of, so when it comes to Adobe, for instance, you know, it used to be you bought an Adobe license and then you sold a computer and stuff like that, and it was 300 bucks and that was it, subscription-based now. So now every, every license is, is $50. So multiply that times the number of people you have using it, which is a lot now, the sheriff's office has quite a bit of it, then, but we also, I think Debbie turns around and she backcharges that. Is that right? Yeah, yeah, so, so some of these things, even though they're listed under IT, they're actually being charged back to the departments as well.
So if you go to page 50, the top line is the administrative reimbursement projected at basically 245,000. That's the administrative charges, there are the internal transfers of allocating those costs out. Now, the departments that have their own funds, they're concerned with that significant increase. It's necessary with all the additional security and software that's in place. Regarding like the, I got an email the, yesterday for my home computer, Microsoft was $99 a year, and just, it's jumping to 129 for me. And yeah, you can't just buy the software anymore one time, they've just turned to the, it's an annual fee. So, you know, there's, there's that issue, we'll continue to look at it, but we're not aware that there's any allocation issues, it's just a significant increase to get to the security levels that need to be. The other things I would point out that we are anticipating that the cybersecurity grant for next year is dropping to $60,000. So eventually Brian's thinking that's going away and everything, but you can see the, the equipment service contracts, you know, that's estimated $666,000 there. We did, Brian and I worked on the communications and the cell phone and the internet, and since his request, we went through and looked at to what we think they'll be, and we reflected some of those decreased costs that he's got moving forward, so we've reflected those in the budget office line. One other thing I would bring up too, if you flip to page 125, and that's the capital request, so we have $340,000 built in for your, just your typical computer replacements, and then the other thing is a telephone system replacement of 200,000. Brian, I don't know if you want to talk about those programs real quick?
Yeah, so I listened to yesterday's meeting, and so this isn't a replacement so much as an upgrade. So we're not gonna be like replacing all the phones or anything, we're literally just doing some of the backend work in order for us to be compliant. Right now, the, the phone system servers, it sets on an unsupported, outdated as of October, so, server, so that means no security patches and things like that. So, so it doesn't face the world that's on the inside, but if anything should happen to it, then, then we're without a phone system. So I listened to a lot, a lot of discussion about priorities and stuff like that, and I think that the county having a phone system should be a very, very high on the priority list, and if we, we don't do that, you know, then, then we know what it's like not to have a phone system at times, so. So anyway, that would be something that I would really say that we need to make sure, and I, I don't know on that number that for under capital improvement, did that include like, so normally I get a, a $250,000 allotment for upgrades, networks and things like that, so is, did we throw that number in addition to the phone system, or did we just?
So those are, well, the phone system was your improvement of 200,000.
Yeah.
And then the 340,000 was your, your, just your typical equipment replacement and upgrades.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, I typically, as you can tell, I don't normally spend everything that's in my computerization, capital improvements line, but I need to make sure that we have enough left in there in case something I should need to do, something pretty drastic.
So are you on a four or five-year replacement cycle?
Five-year, yeah, so I'm on a five-year replacement cycle. Typically, you know, five years is about max on those stuff. Now, do I have a few older systems out there that are still performing and okay? Yeah, do I replace them? For sure at five years, no. But typically I try to do a five-year replacement on those, yeah.
Brian, on the phone upgrade as opposed to replacement?
Right.
When you put the term upgrade, are we locked in with the current provider that way?
So it depends on the, like, so we haven't, you know, we haven't signed any, we haven't done anything yet on this, but, but, so they offered, and instead of doing a CapEx, doing an OpEx type approach, where we just pay them so many, so much money a month, it covers the phone system. So, but if we do an outright capital expenditure, then basically it's just an annual maintenance contract at that point. So it kind of depends on what, what we all agree to. I don't know with the way the money is and stuff like that, I don't know, maybe it's time to talk about that. I've never been a big fan of OpEx, it's just the fact that they're probably running into a lease, and with lease comes interest and all and stuff like that, so.
So it would be more than the?
Yeah, at the end, at the end of the contract, it would be more, yeah, because that.
Spread over a certain number of years.
Yeah, five years.
Five years.
Yeah.
So what phones do the courts have over there?
The same ones we have.
So. Are they in the same situation we're in?
They use our phone system, so yes.
Oh, so, I mean, when we say upgrade, they're part of the upgrade?
Absolutely, yeah, this is county-wide.
So their servers, when you say compliant, compliant with who or what?
So Microsoft, so Microsoft, they, they publish an end-to-life for each of their products. So like, for instance, so like, we're running on Exchange 2019 server, right, was 2025. So what they're saying is, is after, after this year, we're no longer gonna provide security upgrades or anything like that, and then they basically encourage you to move to their, to the model that they have, right?
Encourage?
Yeah.
That's why they're a trillion-dollar-plus company.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, so. Mine just means up to date.
Yeah.
So, I mean, how many phones do we have, the state, the courts, and how many do we have? Do you have roughly?
I don't, I don't have a breakout of that, we have roughly 400 phones. So that's not, that's not, so there's, there's phones and there's extensions, and so, you know, without getting into the minutia of the phone system and everything, extensions do a lot of things like hunt groups, call trees, I mean, it just goes on and on and on. I mean, it just goes on and on, on the, on the inside of the programming of the phone system. But, uh, but yeah, it's quite.
So are they at 20% of the phone system? I mean, you see where I'm going with this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I totally get it.
I won't be around the bush now, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, I can get the breakout pretty really fast, but I, I don't have the number. I would say.
I mean, I think we're going to be going to them and asking for money for everything else. I mean, let's throw this in there.
I would say they're at the, I would say they're at the lower end of the usage of the phone system just because, um, not, not every, so like around here, like within, like the, the annex, there's a lot more phones because there are a lot more employees that are here that have a phone assigned to them. Over there, not necessarily every person has a phone. So, I, but I would say, you know, out of 400 phones, I would say 20%.
Yeah, I didn't get an exact number, but I just want to look into that when we look into this.
Yeah. Well, and something else too, and I, I, I know that it's been, it's tough for departments and stuff, but, you know, the, the bottom line, until this year, the, the commission, you know, has been absorbing the increased IT costs and stuff. But now I think, who, Debbie's the one, okay. So, but now I think Debbie's turned around and she's actually up that, you know, through, uh, that program that we use that allocates costs, yeah, cost out to different departments. So, uh, so I, and this kind of goes back to when we were talking about, you know, the more locations you add, the more people you add, obviously the more costs you add. And it, you can almost break it down to, you know, I, at one point I had a, a per employee cost as far as what it takes to add from an IT perspective, one employee. So a location is huge. So like, for instance, you know, when we added the, uh, location for the treasurer slash auditor's office, right? It was, it was pretty big, so.
So again, where he's talking about this additional allocation, on page 50, on the top line, we're going from basically 104,000 to 245,000. So the other department funds are absorbing that extra, you know, $140,000 cost. But that's just an example of how much our IT costs have gone up due to Microsoft charges, uh, additional security, um, costs and, you know, things of that nature.
So, I mean, our expenses, you know, based upon from everything I'm hearing is our expenses, are out basically, uh, so I don't know when the funding or how the funding came about that allows the departments to, uh, function. But I don't think that funding, you know, that core funding is keeping up with the amount of expense that's being incurred today. I mean, that's, that's, that's why I think there's such a lopsided, because like when you look at that chart, I mean, that thing goes up like, like one of Elon's rockets, you know, internet usage and these service contracts. And I don't, the subscription, these subscription models, these aren't going away. These are, are the future. I mean, that's what we're seeing. So back when I started 10 years ago, this, this wasn't a thing. But now it's like, not only a thing, it's going to be the way that people want to do business.
It's almost like when you hire an employee, you say, they're going, we're going to pay them 50 grand and they just go walk away.
Right.
We know the, we know insurance, we know taxes.
Yes.
Now we're going to have to know IT and it's not as incurred as a result of adding another body.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Because that comes along with the cost of that.
Yeah. Yeah, so it takes, basically, it takes X amount of dollars to get an employee that's at, where it's at either desk and do their job.
Right.
What amounts to. So we, uh, so we're, we're pretty busy in the IT department. You know, I've got, um, three full-time employees beside myself and then Melissa does quite a bit of work too. But I really just track, uh, the people that, that report to me and we're fielding. I did a, basically a call study back in September, I'm sorry, back in July. And, uh, so Brent's filled about 1,400 calls. It seemed like each one of the staff members were full, uh, mounting, or getting about 1,400 calls. And then, uh, then I'm doing more than that, but. So we're tracking about 621 total users. I've got that broken down by department, uh, 306 PCs, laptops, 119 network devices, 60 servers, 13 hosts, nine locations, 642 email accounts. We do the access control, we do the surveillance systems, um, the mail servers, and we help the different departments with all their software and basically anything else that comes along. I did not, though, I did not go for any additional money when it comes to the salaries. Because, you know, without having the salary study done and everything, I, I just, I mean, I guess I'll just go with the COLA. I do agree with people, um, that, and I, I know, heard your comment too, that I think that, you know, there should be a 3% COLA, not a 2 points or something. But I don't know what that does to people's numbers, but, um, other than that, my old staff says thank you for working at Cola.
So if we go to the cloud, what, what's the savings going to be?
Go to the cloud for, which thing?
What you were talking about with Microsoft?
Oh, it's, it's, there's no savings. It's additional costs. It's about, by the time it gets done, it's also known to be about 60 or 80,000 more a year. Yeah. I'm just, we're just on the front end of getting a little bit, like, I just bought some licensing so we could start doing these mail server migrations and stuff. But, uh, but I, I would say by the time I'm southside and done, it'll be between 60 and 80,000 additional a year. And that 2026 number kind of reflects, reflects that. Because I, you know, I look at that stuff too, I'm like, holy cow. And then you start going through and you look at the breakdown. And, um, you know, you got, you know, additional software costs, you know, they're being passed along with increases and stuff. There's, uh, additional software general being purchased and things like that. And, and all of it's necessary. I mean, it's not, there's not, nothing on my list that says that it's something that we don't usually.
I would have any more questions?
Nope. Thank you, Brian. All right.
845 is what it's supposed to be here, so.
No, we're still ahead, so.
Actually, mine shouldn't take that long. You ready?
I know.
We keep rolling, lock them down. We're going to take a break or whatever.
Okay.
Probably keep rolling and get you done. 83.
109.
Oh, wow, there's that little bit on 83 and then 109, I guess.
We've got to start arguing already.
Well, that's a good thing.
Sorry about the pages.
We mostly agree. All the right stuff you agreed with me.
84 is the transfer of approximately 100, or 1.8 million dollars from the general fund over to the sheriff's fund. And then everything else is. 102.
So basically, if we sent you, I sent you the spreadsheet. So you could look at the, inside the budget book. But the spreadsheet I sent you, and I can give you a copy if you want. It was like trying to print it off and I didn't.
All right.
This is what, it's the same thing that's in there, except with our changes in them. In purple, you can see, those are the changes that, uh, the auditor and I worked out and we both agree on everything except for the, uh, revenue. Uh, the revenue, he wants to keep at 6.2, is that right?
Yeah, and that was based on actual from October 1 of '24 through September 30 of '25, and assuming flat going forward. Since then, we've gotten another month from revenue and we're up slightly under 1%. One of the drawbacks with revenue numbers, they can fluctuate all over the board and it's hard to, to know, you know, trends from that information. So again, on the conservative side, I took actuals for the 12 months ended September 30th and left those flat going forward.
You know, some of those, uh, late '24, early '25 numbers still had some trickling in from when he had a half sentence instead of three years.
And this was, yeah, sales tax in, in general and everything, yeah.
Just trickles because of the 1.8 went away.
As of our December BSA, it was 5.8365 or something like that. If you annualize that out, it's going to be a 63365 and that's what I'm asking for. The last four months, I believe, has been, and so for us to get to that number, it's got to be at least 530,000. That's what it annualizes out. The last four months, it's always, it's been above 530,000 a month. So I think, I feel comfortable that this next month is going to be 530,000. So we'll be at the 63 and that's why I feel like we should be at that.
We have that number by the 10th of the month, don't we? December number?
Yes, normally we have not received a.
It'll be December 8th, I think, yeah. But I think if you just look at the annualization on our, on BSA right now, we're going to hit that number. I think it'll go over actually. But, uh, I'm willing to go with the annualization, but I would ask that you consider that. But we agree on everything else on the purple, you can look.
So next week, we're sitting here.
Yeah.
I hope, yeah, hopefully, next week we'll have a, an update there on everything.
We have removed two full-time positions. The Towes, Wardsville deputy position, and then recently I've removed a, uh, one of the SRO positions at Blair Oaks. That SRO position will free up $44,000 of associated revenue. I'd like to take that and put it towards, uh, I'm asking for a position, a lieutenant's position for patrol division. Uh, and I've sent you a position paper on it on why we need that. I've actually, um, made that with a drug nexus for the opioid money so we could use opioid money for the, for the other part of the, of the 44 that I, that I won't, that will be short. It's on that paper I just gave you. The salary of a lieutenant's position is 109,637 and that's with benefits. Uh, if we provide the 44,000 from the, uh, the associated revenue, then that offset is about $65,000. And I think that our, the, the nexus, the drug nexus that I wrote in that, that lieutenant's position more than will cover us using the opioid money. Because you know, that opioid money is very restrictive. It can only be spent on certain things and I'm one of them. So I'd like to take advantage of that and try to get some of that money and get this lieutenant's position. This would be my fourth, uh, I'm losing my fourth, uh, captain in that position. I won't go into it too much because he's sitting behind me, but we hate him. But, uh, he's, he's, uh, he's moving on down to Alabama to another job. And while we appreciate that, uh, we started looking at, and we were talking to him and the former, one of the former captains. And there's just a lot going on in patrol division and it's the only division that doesn't have a lieutenant. So we really need to bring that in there so they can take some of the burden. That position is on 24/7, he gets phone calls all the time, always having to deal with, well, just a multitude of things. And so it would be very beneficial, uh, so much so, like I said, that I felt it prudent for us to, uh, take a position out of the school. Now, they still have the, the three schools, still have an SRO in each of them, but we took one of those positions out. So I'd ask that you, uh, go ahead and give us the lieutenant's position based on that 44,000 I came up with out of my budget and then the rest of it out of the opioid settlement funds. Realistically, our budget is, is uncomfortable. But if you look at some of the, uh, parts of it, it is not as bad. We had a 300, about $313,000 increase in benefits for insurance and then $164,000 increase for IT. The IT I'm concerned about, they do a great job for us. Technology is a staffing multiplier, without a doubt, staffing multiplier. Brian, Devin, Brent, all of them, they do an outstanding job for us. But my concern is, is that we're up to $287,000, $257,000 we're paying for IT now. I'm still having to pay reimbursement for Adobe. Um, I'm still paying $25,000 on top of that for computers. And then when this $200,000 bill for the phones come out, I'm going to have to pay part of that too, which I understand. But it just seems like I'm getting a lot of money, a lot of things for computers taken out, but I've got an increase of $164,000, uh, in that budget also. So I'm not asking for any changes. I'm just wanting to bring that up to your attention, that it just seems like we're getting a lot of, we're having to pay a lot for technology, which I understand. But I don't know if $164,000 or $257,000 plus, you have to pay for all this other stuff on the side, so. I don't know, I'm just wanting to bring that up to your attention. I think it's something that you should start thinking about because I'm sure, I'm not the only one. I'm sure EMS is in the same aspect and so is, uh, public works. But again, they, and I want to make sure, uh, I think Brian Riedner is one of the best hires that you guys have ever done. So I don't want to take anything away from him or what he does. And he buys me a coffee every now and then, so.
Pie?
He hasn't bought me pie yet. He and I both are doing good on pie, so.
Chair, if you want to talk about on 102, your capital request and if there's any modifications with anything that's come up recently there?
I, I don't think we've had any, have we had any modifications on our capital? We brought the, we brought the vehicles way down.
Because of mid purchase issues.
So other than that, I think we're, we're doing the very best we can to, to work with the budget. We're working with revenue, we're working with our vendors to try to see what we can do about better, uh, about vendors. We recently went from New World back to Interpol. New World had some problems for us, but it was very expensive. So we actually reduced a lot of our costs by dropping New World. So, uh, I think we're doing everything we possibly can. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, the removal of the two FTE positions, we talked about this a little yesterday or sometime. The SRO did have revenue associated with it or expense, however you want to look at it. The deputy for Towes, Wardsville, we supplied the vehicle and equipment, they paid for the deputy, right? So.
Training and then, uh, the, yeah, everything.
Let me pick on boarding of prisoners for just a minute.
Sure.
Or bring it up. Budgeted at 400,000 for next year and it's going to be 450 for this year. Is that being too optimistic?
I don't think so. So the one good thing is we had that meeting and, um, we talked a lot with, uh, with prosecutor and with, uh, and the judge. And it seems like to me that they've been doing really good on, uh, on moving prisoners. Now, the good news is I'm only, I think I'm housing 21 out right now. Typically that was at 29 and 30. So I mean, it's, they've reduced how many I'm housing out right now. But more importantly, and I can't find it now, but Department of Mental Health is what our, is one of the biggest issues that we have right now. I have six people, uh, waiting to go to, uh, beds. But I have six people waiting to go to beds. One of them has been like 257 days and I can't send them anywhere else. We have to keep them. And number one, it's horrible for them. I mean, they, they try to do, uh, online Zoom, they try to give them meds, but these guys and gals don't take the meds like they're supposed to. They don't want to do anything with Zoom. to, they don't want to do anything with Zoom. We're simply not set up to, to have these, this mental health stuff in our facility. Takes a lot of our time, we're having to deal with them on, on a constant basis. So it takes a lot of time, and it's costing us money, because that'd be six more people that I could have in my facility if it wasn't for that. So I, I know there was a lawsuit filed here recently against Department of Mental Health, I don't know if y'all saw that.
Was that from another county, CILM or what was it?
ACLU.
Those three, three other...
Three entities, ACLU and some other people filed it. No, there it is. But they filed this because of the waiting of prisoners. I felt bad because I had six, and I was talking to Jackson County, their captain in their jail. They've got 60. So, and then not only did my staff break, and did a great job, by the way, Corey did a good job on that, but not only did he give me a breakdown of how many we have waiting, but he gave me their waitlist number. So, the two different facilities. I've got one that's been there for 174 days, and he's number 94 on the waitlist. But on the same token, I've got one that's number 71 on the waitlist, and he's been with me for 229 days. So there's no rhyme or reason how they move them, they're two different facilities, but there's no rhyme or reason, I don't know, I don't know how they base it on when they pull, if it's the sheriff that grips the most, the judge that grips the most, I have no idea. But...
We, we heard other horror stories a week ago at MAC, didn't we, about other counties, the same thing?
So I originally had included $500,000 for prisoner boarding, and after the discussion, we lowered that to $400,000, but there's a risk there that $400,000 is not enough, but...
Captain from Boone County, their jail, I guess, holds 170. They're going to be up $2 million by the end of the year for, for boarding prisoners elsewhere. So they're looking at perhaps building a 1,000-bed jail that will cost 200 to 300 million dollars.
Yeah.
I, I didn't, I find it hard to believe their jail holds less than the hour.
They've been, they've been having issues with their prisoners, they've been housing out for as long as I've been, they've been housing out. I don't think they've ever not had prisoners housed out. We've had to do it for the last year.
They said they're going to hit $2 million this year for...
Yeah, those are two issues that's going to have to be resolved with us. Number one, we need to do that build out.
Every day, does, do, do the judges see a roster daily, and, and then they can look and say, wait a minute, that one really could be released?
Yes, so we do, they get it to our roster every day, that tells not only who we have in custody, but it's also called an in and out report, so it shows who's been, who has been arrested over that 24-hour period, and who's been released in that 24-hour period. Last night, we had, at 7:00 AM, from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, we had booked in 14 people and released four, I think, so. And one of them can be released as soon as he cooperates and, I mean, he's going to be gone as soon as he sober's up and cooperates with processing, but, but yeah, they processed in 14 people last night. And on top of that, these, they're handing out meds, they're handing out meals, they're answering questions, they're cleaning, I mean, the staff down in the jail, I keep overemphasized on how well, all my staff on how well they do with what they have at hand. So it's, it's an outstanding job. I too agree that, I don't think the 2%, but you know, whenever Eric brought up about the, the flat amount, I started thinking about it, and I think, I think maybe, and I don't know if it'd be cheaper, but to do the 2% and a flat amount, and that would help, he's right, it would help to lower the people that are making the lower amount of money. I think it would help them especially offset some of the health costs that has been increased this year. So I don't know if that's something that you guys want to think about, because now you've heard 1%, 2%, 3%, I don't know. So that's going to be your, you know, your decision, but...
Oh no, if you talk flat in there, then we have compression.
And you're right, it is, but you also, I mean, and we're already there, there...
I actually like the flat amounts better myself, but...
There's something to think about, I can't think of anything else, I think that's about all I had, unless there was anybody having...
You're comfortable with the, the level structure, the, the structure of your different titles and your rankings?
No, I'm waiting to see what the salary survey comes back, but our, we are, our, our salaries are too close. Matter of fact, we just promoted one of the lieutenants to captain, and a sergeant to lieutenant, and the sergeant was making well above what the lieutenant's starting pay is, so we're doing the, the $2,000 like you, like we've been doing forever as long as I know. But, no, I'm not, I'm not happy, I thought, I'm going to, I'd really like to wait and see what, because they talked about step promotions, they talked about a lot of stuff, so I'm looking forward to reading their report, to find out what, what they think, to see if we can open that up some, or do the, like, I think it was, I think it was you that said something about for some of the, the ones, like our data entry, to give them steps, to at least give them a, a career path of some type, so they know what they can get. What I'd like to do, and you know, I talked about it, is to come up with the military graph, you've, you've worked this long, and here's, this is, and you come there, and that's what you get, but that would be very expensive to do. But then, there is no, if answered out, it's what 15 years you're making. But I don't think we can do that.
Your philosophy on overtime, may want to share with that?
Yeah, so our overtime, we, we're going to do it just like we did the last time, we kept our overtime at what the rate was we asked for last year, and then we're going to pull from our salary line for the vacancy positions down in overtime if we need it. Hopefully, we will get more staffing, I think we're down, we're 11 down right now, 12 on Friday. 12 on Friday, but it's not that we're not hiring people. In 2025, we've hired 21 people. It's just what we do is not for everybody, so...
So the captain of the Patrol Division you're losing, you'll, you'll...
Go where?
You'll fill that slot from within, or...
Yes, we're filling it. We're actually moving Captain Marcy over to Patrol Division, and then we promoted Chad Garrett, Lieutenant Garrett's up to captain, and we're promoting John Fulmer, Sergeant Fulmer to lieutenant.
What kind of ongoing recruiting expense are you incurring in terms of billboards or video or whatever?
That billboard coming out of the, out of Algoa, and that, that one's supposed to be coming up, I think, this year, and if it is, I'm going to snag that and put it up there, that we're, we can put more money than them, but right now, I think we're paying, is it $15,000 in Zimmer?
I think we budgeted $30,000, so, you know, we're not in, just 30 days at a time.
We're using Zimmer for our social media, not only to get the, the applications out there, but it gets our brand out there. And then we went to 17, KMIZ, and we're doing, you're going to start seeing some clips, little 30-second, 15-second clips during high school football games, and we even talked about maybe a Monday night game, trying to throw one up there, so, for our area. So we're, we're doing, we're going to the, to the job fairs, we're, we're, we're going to other people's departments and handing out applications, I mean, that got me escorted out of one place, but we, we're doing whatever we can to try to get staffing. But it's not just us, PD, they're down 13, I think, Highway Patrol, last I counted, I can't remember, I want to say they were down 53. Capitol Police was down three. Lincoln University was at full strength, and I think he's down to four now. So I think it's, I, I mean, it's just a nationwide thing, it's just tough. And in this area, it's twice as tough, because we have a lot of law enforcement in this county, but we're all competing against the same pool of people to try to come forward for, so you got to have the salary amounts to get, to get their attention, and then you look at the career progression, the fact that we have take-home vehicles, the fact that we have two retirements, I mean, those things, those things are big when we're trying to attract people. So I had to approve my budget right now if you want to, I'm good with that.
Well, no, we're going to make you wait for a week.
Yeah, I figured that.
When's your last day, Kurt?
Friday.
This Friday? You want to come in, you want to come in next week and...
If you could do something about the winter here. Small.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you've done for us, and thank you, Seeley.
Yeah, a little sad to go, but got to check it out.
Good luck.
I will tell you that there's probably only one person in this world that was happier with that Dallas game than you, and that was Craig.
Yep.
And Bowler. That was our Super Bowl.
That was our Super Bowl.
For the next four years, that might be the only thing I have to carry me. We've been carrying stuff for about 30 years. My VCR tapes are worn out. I can't even watch the games anymore, so...
That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, I...
Thanks, Sheriff, thank you guys, appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Of those few, do you have any idea how many left? Had a few that...
We don't count them.
Really short-term rolled back out, right? But most of those were in jail?
Uh, yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'll be pretty quick, and I sent you guys an email yesterday afternoon, and, okay, I meant to CC you on that, I apologize, I forgot. Basically, the only thing... The only thing I wanted to go over, obviously, the department requested is quite a bit more than what the budget officer recommendation is for '26. As far as I'm concerned, that's just due to us wanting to turn a part-time attorney position into a full-time attorney position and be able to hire that, and that, that amount would give us a range, allowing us to hire anywhere from an entry level to someone who might come in the door with, with 10 or 15 years of experience. Other than that, I don't really have anything to go over, I'm happy to answer any questions about that at all.
You're talking about your caseload, and we kind of talked to this sheriff just recently, but he's got a few less prisoners that we're boarding outside of Cole County. How, I don't know, we kind of had a meeting about that before, and does anything really change, is there anything else that you can see that we can maybe be doing to help the situation?
You know, not off the top of my head, I can't think of too much right now, we're just trying to move the cases as quickly as we can. Obviously, if I have more attorneys, that helps us do that a little faster. We did have a little bit of turnover recently, I did, was able to hire someone in though, at a, at an entry level position to, to cover one of our, cover our latest full-time opening pretty quickly. But they're brand new, so they're going to take a little bit of training and, and whatnot to get up to speed. Other than that...
So there's been a lot of turnover, I think, at Public Defender's office?
Yeah, there's been, there's been a lot of, I think that, you know, when, when Rebecca and I last spoke, I think that she was getting pretty close to being fully staffed there, I know they've had a couple new ones come in. Similar situation though, you get people coming straight out of law school, they're going to take time to, to get trained up and sort of get their feet wet with, you know, dealing with court, so...
Yeah, so what I was concerned about is if we hire another attorney for you all, are they able to keep up and try to keep that rolling, but...
Well, I mean, you know, when you think about it, the public defender doesn't have every single case that we have here. They have a, they have a good percentage here, but we also deal with a lot of private counsel as well, so, yeah, I mean, I do think that us hiring another would be helpful in just generally moving things along.
Same, same line, maybe just a little different. If money weren't a factor, but the, the restrictions on how quick the courts can handle things, public defender, what is your ideal number of staffing? Is, is that just one more that you have?
For attorneys, I think ideally, it would probably be, then I, I run into spacing issues with our office too, so like, really, realistically, I can do one more. Ideally, it would be great to have like 10 APAs, that would allow for a much smaller caseload per APA and allow them to, you know, work those cases more quickly. But that's just, I hadn't really considered that too much, but that's just sort of off the top of my head, what I, what I would, but we're at, so when we're fully staffed right now, I am at, if you count the part-time, when fully staffed, I have eight assistant prosecutors, and then Sarah obviously handles the, the child support. So with me on the criminal side, since I do still handle cases, that would, that would give us nine, 10 would be great, but with one of those nine currently being part-time, I think that moving that person to full-time would also be beneficial. That's all I really got.
This, this, maybe this is already said, but the industry, although you're not in an industry, but let's call it one.
Sure.
The optimum number of cases per APA is...
I'll have to go back and look and see what the latest NDAA recommendation is, but I want to, it's like definitely, I want to say it's under 100 felony cases. I don't know if they do a total for like misdemeanors or not, I can, I can find that for you and get it back.
More of a curiosity than anything.
I know that, I know that public defenders, now granted, it's a little bit different for them because they have clients that they're dealing with, but at the same time, we have victims, which is not an attorney-client relationship, but it's, it's somewhat similar. You know, guiding them through the process, discussing cases with that, things like that. Public defenders consider, I think, 100 cases to sort of be their threshold, and as you could see from the numbers I was able to give to you guys, we're, we're quite a bit more than that, so...
There used to be some inconsistency between how prosecutors counted cases and public defenders counted cases. One of them, and I can't remember which one it was, would say, we got one defendant, but there's three charges, so we get to count three. The other would say, no, we got one defendant, then how many cases, we have to count one?
I don't, I don't know, I only count the cases. Like if one defendant has three charges in the same case, to me, that's one case.
Okay.
Now, if one defendant has three different cases, that's three different cases. So if they've been charged three separate times for three different things, that's three cases. If they've been charged in one case with three different counts, that's one case.
That's the way you look at it?
That's how, yeah.
I think that, I can't say this is still the case, I shouldn't use the term case, still the practice, but there was a time when I think those defenders were counting charges.
I haven't...
Blew up their number like they were...
That may be, I'm not exactly sure, so...
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sir?
All right, I'll stick around for Sarah.
She got me some backup, is that what you're saying?
Oh, I don't know.
I'll try to be relatively quick too, and I apologize because some of these might be a couple things that I probably should have emailed you on, so I'm sorry. There were some requested amounts that were changed in terms of the recommended on some of the line items, some of them I don't, aren't a big issue, but in terms of the ones that I saw that there could potentially be an issue is, on communications, I had requested $1,700, it looks like the recommended amount is $1,200. There may be something that I don't know about that the...
So on communications and internet, and I don't know that you have internet, but we worked with Brian on the latest, and he thought we, we built in what we thought would be the actual there.
I just could tell that by, with December's bill, we're going to exceed the $1,200 this year, so unless it's going to somehow be cheaper next year, I just wanted to make sure. As for mileage, I have requested $1,700, it looks like the recommended amount is $1,200. As for mileage, I have requested thirty-five hundred dollars, and the recommended amount is twenty-seven hundred. When I requested the thirty-five hundred dollars for next year, that was actually the most conservative amount I could have requested. I probably should have requested thirty-seven, thirty-seven hundred or four thousand. In 2024, our mileage expenses were three thousand five hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-five cents, which exceeded the thirty-five hundred dollars that had been budgeted for that year. I'm not exactly sure how the sev, the twenty-seven hundred dollars was calculated that's recommended. I assume maybe it was based on what the anticipated expenses for 2025 are. So far in 2025, our mileage expenses have been two thousand one hundred and nine dollars and sixty cents. That obviously doesn't include December yet, but it's in no way an accurate representation of the year. I suffered some health issues this year that required me to have two separate surgeries, one in July where I was unable to drive, well, one in July and one in September. I was unable to drive and make in-court appearances for approximately eight weeks for those two combined times, so we're, the mileage expenses for this year are missing essentially two months. The prosecutors in those other counties and in Cole County worked with me and made those appearances for me, but that in no way is an accurate reflection, so barring we have another worldwide pandemic or I have health issues again next year, we will most certainly exceed twenty-seven hundred dollars, which I would say potentially, if making a cut like that would mean that I wasn't able to make in-person appearances in all the counties to stick with that budget, and that would potentially violate the cooperative agreement that we have with those four counties because they have a contractual expectation that I can make those. The additional amount that, uh, the other reason that it was lower for 2025 is it's not just when I wasn't able to make those court appearances. My legal staff also has to make court appearances for, to testify, since we monitor all of our probation cases. And so, since there weren't any hearings and trials during those eight weeks when I wasn't able to be in person, they didn't have to make travel either. So I'm just saying that the, the twenty-seven hundred dollars is just not going to be feasible, and I will exceed it almost certainly, and I just wanted to give you that.
Thirty-seven hundred, you think, is more realistic?
I think thirty-seven hundred dollars would be more realistic. I, like I said, it's my fault that I only requested thirty-five hundred, but I think that would be more reasonable. The other one that I had was office supplies. I had requested five thousand, and the recommended amount is, um, two thousand six hundred and forty-eight. I, that's probably doable, but it doesn't give us much of a cushion. And where a lot of departments, especially legal departments, have been able to cut costs in recent years, going paperless, our department doesn't have that luxury because with the state laws and specifically the family support guidelines, we are unable to go paperless. So we have paper files still because it's an archaic system, so we spend a lot of money on paper and a lot of money on ink. And ink has basically, I think, doubled since last year for the cartridges that we have. And when, we can't cut those expenses, those specific expenses, since we have legal obligations to do paper discoveries and we have to print forms for every court appearance. There's a lot of stuff that we have supply-wise that we just simply can't cut. So I just want to say that that doesn't leave us much of a cushion by doing that amount. And we also have some unintended expenses that come in, like this year. I think we had to replace a printer that I had to use Office Supply budget for because it was like a month after the warranty was over and things like that. So I just want to give you a heads-up that, that doesn't leave much of a cushion if we did have to exceed it.
We did explore trying to have her, her department go paperless at one point, and yeah, we're unfortunately not able to do that due to statutory guidelines.
We have a lot of tax information and other information that they don't want us to be transferring electronically. I would make the argument that it's probably, that there are mechanisms to do that that are more secure than paper, but right now, we have to do it with paper files, and it requires a lot of printing. The other item that was approved, but I just wanted to note it, is on the office equipment furniture, I had, um, requested forty-five hundred dollars. That's because Brian is recommending that all four of the child support laptops be replaced. I've just requested two, money for two next year and then two the following year rather than the whole thing at once, but I just want to make you aware that, that, that's what that, those have a specific thing that I'm requesting. Lastly, I just want to say, uh, it's just a salary issue. This is the first year that I know that what is requested, not what I requested originally, was over the amount that's the grant for the state of Missouri, but that with the increased health insurance costs, that our budget would potentially go over what we are granted from the state of Missouri, by a little bit. I think it's fifteen hundred dollars or something to that extent. I had requested, I just want to make sure, just briefly, that while the work that we do isn't super, we don't make headlines, it's not super evident, but we do make a hugely positive impact on Cole County. And I would say that in the almost six years since I've been doing this, I can count on one hand the number of times I filed an enforcement case against someone who owes support and isn't paying it, who's living in Cole County. I always, almost always base it on where the children and the custodial parents are living, and the majority of the cases that we handle are Cole County cases. So when we enforce child support orders, we are ninety-nine percent of the time enforcing them for children and custodial parents that live in Cole County. So when we start collecting that support, those are dollars that are infused into the Cole County economy. They help clothe and feed the children in Cole County. They help recover benefits, like TANF benefits, that maybe the state has paid. When a non-custodial parent pays support, the state can recoup those benefits, and so we make a huge impact on Cole County. And so the little bit of money that we go over, I think really, I mean, it, it comes out in the wash because we, we make a huge impact on Cole County. We also handle paternity cases where we establish child support orders, and those are generally almost always for children that are residing in Cole County. And we also establish medical support orders, so we ask the courts to enter orders that if a non-custodial parent has health insurance available through their employer, that they're ordered to provide insurance. So that helps to alleviate the impact of the number of Cole County children on Medicaid. And so we, we do have a huge impact. And I say all of that because I have requested a three percent merit raise for one of the people in my department. That was the only merit raise that I requested this year. And she's been with the county. She's very loyal. She's been in the child support department for over ten years. She not only has a huge number of criminal non-support cases that she works, she also does all of our paternity cases, which take a lot of labor, a lot of paperwork, and there are a lot, there are a lot to do. And she also is the only person in our office that's trained to collect genetic testing samples, um, based on the court guidelines, and so those help move our cases forward so that we can get child support orders and medical orders for children. The three percent that I requested for her, um, comes out to one thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-six cents. I realize that we're slightly already over the amount that we will receive from the state of Missouri, but that's really a minimal amount, and she's deserving of even more, and I would just like to resubmit that request for her. I'm sorry. I speak really quickly, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions. Yeah, very quick. It was clear, so.
We'll get out of here before you think of any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Way ahead of schedule.
Yeah, Judy's here. Do you want?
Yes, I'm-
Ben, and then?
No, I'm, I think it's, I think this is great.
I don't know if you want to take a little break and we reach out to, to Greg and Eric and Ralph to try and get them moved up?
I guess we have a five-minute break.
Well, do you first? Okay, well, do you?
I'm usually pretty easy. This is just a little bit, just to repeat you, in terms of what we do, the top sheet is just basic information of what I, we are still doing and continue to do, so I wanted to give you that. You're welcome. Jessica, thank you.
How long the break are you wanting to take in between? Five minutes? Okay.
Just cup the coffee and get rid of one.
Yeah. We did yesterday, and it worked well.
The recorder's on page thirty-nine and forty, forty-one?
I keep trying to get moved up to page one, but it's not happening, so.
Down and around the whole thing, so.
So the top sheet ba, is just basic, continuing the daily operation, so I just wanted to remind you of what we do. I feel sometimes we're so quiet that I didn't want to get overlooked because we have such great staff now and spent a lot of time training when I came aboard, and they all do really good, so I'm very proud of them.
Hey Judy, could you just expand just a little bit on deed and fraud, what, what you're seeing and, and preventing, if there's much action there?
We have, we received a lot more requests for people signing up on our website. So when they sign up and they have to, I wish we could do it for them. We've had people come in and we could step them through it, and if they're able to get their email on their phone, we can help them because they're sent a code. We don't see that code, and they have to enter the code. But once they are signed up and something is recorded with their name on it, they will receive a notification. The notification is very detailed. It has the date and the time a deed was recorded, the name of that deed, and if they have any questions on it, then they can call us. So it's a really good notification. I'm happy with it. I always work with our software vendor all the time on trying to tweak things because they can't receive it on their phone. They have to have an email. So I would like to see that notification come to a, a phone, because everybody uses phones, and also an email. So those are things we're kind of, we have that we're trying to work with our vendor on, so, um, yes, it's still out there. It is a real thing. I've got a lot of questions from, uh, people saying, "Is this a real thing or is it just one of those, you know?" This is free. We don't charge you, so we're not trying to sell anything. We're trying to help. So it is a real thing. I think in the bigger cities, it's still happening, so, you know, they have written legislation. I've been a part of that, but they can't, the problem with legislation is that you can't make the recorder's office liable in some of the, the words. I mean, I am learning that the word "and," the word "or," just little words make a difference on who's liable. We are not liable if a record would get recorded that is a fraudulent record. It does not fall on the recorder's office or the recorder's responsibility for that, but we're doing everything we can to prevent that and notifying people. So I'm happy to see more people sign up. I wish we would get even more people sign up. So I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with our software vendor for that. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Um, and then I just wanted to also remind you on, you know, what we do, because when we earn money for general revenue or in our office, it's piece by piece. Like, we charge a dollar for a, a copy. It's a dollar per page. So when we're turning over, when I look at our total for the year, uh, right now, which is just over four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, I just want to remind you that that's dollar by dollar. They're not, we're not getting big checks. So it's a continuous, we are on our feet all day, working all day for that. It doesn't seem like a lot of money when you're looking at, when I write my tax bill, that's my yearly taxes. No, I'm kidding. And so, just, just so you know, that, that is still quite a bit of work for our office. And we have constant questions. We have constant influx of people, so it is a busy office. And I just want staff to be recognized for all of the work that they do, especially when we took time out to help the collector this year. That was in addition to all their other duties, so. And then they made me work extra, just so you know. So that's that. And then I wanted to give you on the projected cost for what I would, am going to spend out of the recorder's fund going into twenty-six. Every year, I set goals for the office. I set projects of expectation to get done. I do work with staff, and I also do some of the indexing and the scanning, but I just wanted to show you the cost for book scanning. We did work on preservation. The last two years, we've received grants. They are not giving any grants this year, but I'm still going to move forward to finish those books and get them scanned. They are still used for a lot of genealogy and, and actually for even a lot of easements. There was a lawsuit in another county, and they were looking for an easement back in the nineteen hundreds, and if they would not have found it, it would not have helped their case, but we found it for them, so we were, we were happy about that. So it's just to, uh, explain that even though these books are old, they are still very important. They're important to the county of Cole here. So going forward next year, um, I'm looking at about fifty thousand dollars. I didn't have that for you, Jay, when we met. I am sorry, but I just got this all calculated. So I'm looking at spending about fifty thousand dollars for record preservation out of the recorder's fund going into next year.
So if you, sorry, if you look on page forty-one, it's the record preservation account. So we've got the carry-forward, the cash-forward amount of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So that's the projected beginning balance. But if you look at the bottom line, the book and record preservation, that's four forty-eight, six twenty. That's the projected balance that if she spent all of the money, that's what she would need to spend to hit zero. So even though the request is for fifty thousand, we budget that she could spend all of those funds on the, the preservation piece. So that's why there's a huge difference there. That's just basically the, the, the balance figure there, um, to get the account balance to zero. She'll tell you she's not going to spend four hundred and forty-eight thousand, but that's, that's the, the bookkeeping method here.
Yes. Yeah. So we do try to go at this conservatively, that those books, they are just so expensive. It's just, it's unreal to me, the cost to get those books preserved and protected.
A year from now, we should be seeing a cash forward of about, just short of four hundred thousand.
If, yes, if, if she just spends fifty thousand dollars, correct?
Well, we also, I do have a part-time employee that also comes out of that, so that's about twenty-four thousand a year, about, so it'd be fifty plus that.
Yeah.
But I do look at-
We've got that, we've got thirty thousand.
Yeah, to shoot a little, have a little play on that, so yes. So the fifty doesn't include that.
Yeah.
So it's about eighty on the high end. And I went over this budget with Jay. He was very kind, came and met with me. We spent a lot of time on it. I'm very happy with it. The only changes, which I don't know right now, is when I was at the Matt conference, they were talking, and the recorder's part of that conference, that they are going to raise the recorder's fee for their conference next year. Might be a hundred dollars, maybe two hundred, but it looked to me like people were leaning towards raising it a hundred dollars, just because the cost of everything have, have gone up. So I don't, I don't know for sure what that cost is going to be. I hopefully can adjust it if I need to.
Judy is very good, and this is something Rob and I have discussed, and we're probably going to push a little more next year. Judy is very good that if she needs to move money within her budget categories, because she's, something has changed, she's projected to overspend in a category, she requests to move money from other categories where she may be underspending. We've had a tendency just to, for other departments to just request contingency request versus making budget moves within their own budget at first. That may be something that I'm, would kind of approach next year that we do a little different, that live within your own budget first before you come request contingency from the commission.
Well, when you're living within your budget, you're, you're living within your bottom-line budget, and you get to modify like Judy does?
Yes. That's, that's the hope. Versus, "Oh, I've projected to underspend five thousand here, but I'm a thousand here, so give me an extra thousand dollars," and then, and the result, you still underspend your budget five thousand dollars, where we could have moved money around first before asking for contingency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the only thing that, that we did talk about was the mileage. I do go to, I go to four district meetings a year. I missed one this year, just because my car broke down on my way there, so I didn't make it, but I did miss one. But typically, I go to four district meetings, and then I, I've been very involved in Pria, so I try to go to the main- so I try to go to the main conference there. And then I go to the Recorder's Conference. And then as far as our software vendor, I try to send as many employees as I can once a year. He has a big update meeting and it's really important. The continuing education is and will always be going on in our office because we deal with legal documents, because things change all the time in interpretation and in statutory changes. So, I try to, we try just to get down to two cars when we have to send several people on these training sessions. So, I did request if Jay would bump it back up to $1,000 for me, and he did agree if that, that would be also receivable from commissioners. Then everything else pretty much stayed the same. I also met with Brian. He's not here, so we can say whatever, right? So, I did meet with Brian and I think we are good there. He, he has kept all of our computers updated. We did get some new ones this year. Our I-County software budget did not change. It's going to be $22,000, which is what it was last year and the year before. So, we didn't really have any major changes, just computer updates as needed, and Brian keeps track of all of that. I did also include, I just wanted to give a big shout out to Brian's, Brian and his staff because Brent and Diana spent, because you know, we had the flood in our office, and Jessica came and we met with all of these vendors twice and everything went like clockwork. I really appreciate it, Jessica. Brian, Brent, I'm sorry, Brent, Brent and Brian. Brent and Diana, it took them all day to get us all set up in the back room. Everybody was crammed there for two months to work, and it took them all day to get everybody set up and adjusted and functioning really well. And then, once everything was, you know, removed and carpeted and all of the vendors, they said they would be here on a certain day, a certain time, and they were, all of them. I was very happy. They were so accommodating and they stayed on schedule, so we were real pleased with that. And then it took IT employees, you know, Brent and Diana came back when we were ready to shift back into our workstations all day. They worked all day. So, Brian, if you're listening, really, we really appreciated that. It was a lot of work for them, and I also appreciate my staff because it wasn't their mess, but they worked very well, no complaints. So, I'm, I'm very happy with that. But, I did want to give you the total cost because I have them. So, other than that, I think we're doing well. Do you have any questions for me?
Is this supposed to? Maybe somebody else-
That's the total cost you were just talking about. That was the total cost of repairs.
Okay.
And I did pay for that out of the Recorder's Fund, just to relieve a little heartburn for you. I am work, I requested in August when we do our budget, I did request a 3% COLA for At that point, I hadn't met with Jay, but since then, I've met with Jay and I, I know your request is 2%. So, we understand that. The only thing that I might do is I, I am looking at maybe one person. I had talked to Jay just recently about maybe adjusting one salary. I will send that to you. I'm still working on it. I, I think this person is deserving of it and has come a long way. So, I will send that to you next week.
I just have a question. Really, is it? For the bicentennial of Jeff City, they had the page where Cole County Incorporated Jefferson City. And I guess the fire of 1918, and how many books did, did that affect?
I don't know, but I'll find out for you.
Okay.
It was 1918 fire. I remember reading about that. You might even have a photo.
There was just the, the very top of the incorporation, and then the rest of it was just burned. So, I'm like, huh.
I, I know-
I'm just curious, I'm always just curious, but you know, I thought, well-
I will find out for you. I know some of the recorders have donated some of their old books to the Historical Society. And at the conference I was at, I ran into a lot of title company people at different settings, and they are just so frustrated by that because all of that history, it's not just genealogy. It still goes back to sometimes it depends on, if you think about your, people just think of real estate as, you know, I buy it, I have a warranty deed or a corporate deed, and then I have a loan, so I have my deed of trust. But, there's so much more than that. Easements, rightaways, you know, well, changes have been made because it used to have to be so many feet, now it doesn't. So, there's a lot, there's a lot to a piece of property that, that will affect it if you go to court. So, and they, they hate recorder offices who have taken those old books and just put them to the side because they still need them and what the value-
1821, when we became a county, one of the first transactions was the emancipation of a slave.
Yes.
And I think there was also the sale of a horse. You know, I mean, it's, it, it fascinates me to go back and look at some of-
Yeah, me too.
Some of this is recorded in handwriting.
Yeah, beautiful.
It's just so beautiful.
And the history's important, and they do bring it forward. So, yeah, that's right. Anything else? And I talk really fast too, sorry. But, I get a lot done, just so you know.
Okay.
Am I good?
Here's the, thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Five minutes. Five minutes.
Greg should be up here soon and then Eric too, so.
Did you get hold of them or?
Yeah, I did. I called them all, so. I'm leaving the cameras video up, so just-
So, watch what we say, is what you're saying?
Yes. Yes.
When's that ever stopped, that five-minute break?
And you'll be on, thank you, okay.
Oh. Five-minute break? No, we can add a time to it.
It's all the sheriff's fault.
I believe that. Regarding your questions you sent out yesterday, sir?
Yeah, answering them while email, so have them if you would.
I've reached out to weathercraft about the roofing situation, for some trains, if we're trying to run them over. I've reached out to, wondering about weight load, what the weight is of the unit, so I can get that to Jeff.
Rob said he was-
Who did the original construction for the roof. The circle hole.
I mean, I'm not anticipating like all of them sitting there for a long time, but I think, I think we probably all agree the ones on the pods are-
Just don't forget everything is still being recorded and streamed when you all have conversations.
So, no personal stuff?
Probably not. I think people might forget.
Yeah.
Hey, I should pull and pick this boat.
Public Works. Zoom. Yellow Public Works, they do the driveways.
No, they didn't.
I know. Yellow Public Works.
I landed right here.
Fill out the paperwork.
For elected officials?
We're still covering the work, huh?
Really? Ah, for elected officials? Sure.
I believe so, I'll double check. I know honors are excluded under most like private entities, but I think the elected officials are covered. I could be wrong.
Check it out.
I'm sidewalk-
I might go by our security today and see if-
Yeah, I haven't do x-rays.
I feel like I'm wearing a bat wallet in my back park.
Yeah.
And I'm not.
There's a pollution swelling problem.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, we're still on.
Yeah. What'd you say?
You've got a bat wallet?
Well, that's what I'm talking about. I'm in charge of sidewalks, stairs, ramps. Public Works' driveway. I'm sticking to it.
Hey, will I be able to put that lumber on that trailer with the, with the doors?
My story, I'm sticking to it. Probably work at the driveways.
Well, it was a parking space.
Parking space is, is the driveway.
If nothing else, just have them take that lumber.
They have an hour to get this sock over this thing here.
Yeah. Yeah, I sent an email to Jimmy yesterday morning.
Do you have the book on there?
It's not, let me know.
Yesterday around 4:30 to lightly salt everything. He said he would.
All right, thank you.
I don't know what time they got up here yesterday.
I'm sorry.
I sent an email to Jimmy out at Public Works at 4:30 to lightly salt all the buildings, but I don't know what time they got up here probably.
Why, it was slicker than, it's not on the door now.
Oh, the sidewalks were too. I slid down Adam Street, going down the hill, so. That's fun. Bouncing off the precurbs. I wish they'd do away with those things.
Hey, did you get my email on that letter?
I am so sorry.
Date on that letter?
What do you want, a letter?
Come on, Larry, you told us.
Oh, oh. Yeah, that's, yeah.
Did they have a date on it that they, that they sent it? I see where Larry's had stamped in, but when, when they say "detective immediately" and they don't put a date on the letter, what are you supposed to do?
Yeah, I, I didn't even know. I was thinking I got it through an email, but now it was addressed to Larry downstairs to begin with.
All right, I think so.
Okay, then he probably just, you know, sent it up to me.
Yeah.
Did somebody have a stamp?
He stamped it. His office just stamped it, "Received."
That's pretty bad that they didn't put a date on it.
Still, when you say, you must do something immediately and you don't date the letter.
You need some? Said I may have some.
I had a few readers.
I got some over here. You want mine? These are readers, are yours?
Yeah, that's what I use, that's readers. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, my God. About the same right trick.
You can buy five of those for like $4 at Walmart.
Yeah.
And you have to have one sitting in every room.
I do.
And those actually had lights on them, but the lights don't work anymore.
Yeah.
Just something to look forward to, Jessica, when you get old. Eyes go away.
Mine already suck. From really strong contacts.
No. No.
Harry, yes, depended on the circumstances, we need to- I just dumped one to the other. Great job with you. Whatever was all the work. And this is the address. And we will now send it here.
You will do.
We'll get the new one ready.
Okay. Everybody ready?
Yep.
Okay. Right camp maintenance.
Where are we doing?
Sign that here.
Okay. Before the budget was turned in, Jay and I went over every line. I think we've got a pretty good sense of what the costs are, what the costs will be with everything going up. Gas prices going up, electric prices going up, syrup water going up. I did the best I could with what I had at the time. I know there's could be some other increases for elevator inspections are going to go up. I know we're, is that, we're putting that up for bid in January? Elevators?
Services?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, there may be a price increase on that too. We did the best we could with what numbers I had at the time. Starting with the salaries, I did, I know we all talked about 2%, so I put a 2% in there for everybody. I also requesting a part-time person from May to, into August to help out with some other things, other projects going and stuff like that, now that we're taking on Public Works cleaning to help free up some other stuff.
On, on part-time, we differed a little. I put hours in for part-time for janitorial services only. So, that's a little difference. Our numbers aren't much different. Greg's request for just general part-time, my recommendation was for part-time hours for janitorial purposes.
Okay, thank you. Line items are pretty close to what I've already spent this year for next year. I'm trying to keep stuff down, but use seats in the courthouse has gone up for toilet paper, paper towels, trash bags, same way with all the other buildings now that we're full with employees and customers coming back, we're just using more products. I didn't really increase much of that. I'm trying to hold steady to it. What we're using, prime example, courthouse this year, I printed these numbers out yesterday. Budgeted, projected budget was almost $15,000, and then I'm requesting 16,200 for next year. That, and we still have, we haven't spent this month for cleaning supplies, so there's probably another $1,000 going into that. So, we're going to be close to 16,200. Did everything as much as I could, tried to keep costs down per y'all's request, but the numbers are what the numbers are. Two vehicles we had to put tires on, which I got with Tyler, and he gave me a rough price, so I put that in there on the vehicle service line. I talked to Debbie about the insurance and stuff. Hopefully that's correct, so.
So, there's a couple of differences. One's internet and communications that we've talked about. Again, I worked with Brian based on the latest we had for projections of next year. We think the insurance cost will be a little lower there. And then basically, everything else is the same as requested. And then basically, everything else is the same as requested.
You want to talk about anything else?
No. You have since we've taken over Public Works, you had an employee coming in at 7:00 and staying till?
Yeah.
Till 4:30?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's gone away, having that employee there.
Around 3:30.
You've got him coming in.
I've been saying until about 4:00.
Okay.
In case something happens. Regarding Jeff's email from yesterday, I have reached, I know I talked to Jeff already. I've reached out to Weathercraft about the roofing. If we could put units up there. He said, yes, we could. Then I reached out to Jeff at SSB Engineering who did the structural for the Sheriff's Department to see about the weight loads. I've also reached out to Wayne about what the new units are going to weigh versus the old units, because he has all that. And once I get all that together, I will send it to you all in an email.
Yeah, if you can put an email that way, I'm kind of to refer back to sometimes forget things.
Thank you. You got a new storage place is what we're talking about. Well, that's what we're trying to do, yeah.
We're going to house some prisoners up there. Let's put tents up there too. Some tents and.
Tent city. Sheriff would love that.
I don't feel so mad. I appreciate that.
Once I get that information, I'll get it to you.
Yeah, so we have all the information, so we have options. Eric, you ready?
Good morning.
Emergency Management's on 86.
So who sent out the warning from city and county on road condition?
That was us.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Trying to save more road accidents. Especially since.
Do you have anything to do with all these text messages that say stay away from Highway 50 and 179?
That is RAVE. It's an automated alerting system that is derived either from two places. It's automated from the computer-aided dispatch system or we can manually issue alerts from a desktop computer, so.
Did I do something to get there?
Yes, you entered into Smart 911 and elected the RAVE notifications. So there's two different public alerting systems that we have. RAVE, which is the elected. You can opt into it. And it also has internal workings for us. And then there's iPaws, which is the we force alerts to your cellphone and makes the god awful noise.
Oh, yeah. That's usually for the abducted.
Abducted, but you know tornado warnings, very serious impacted, you know, public information, that's when those alerts get pushed out.
The nice thing about those alerts, it's a nationwide system. So if you're driving and you, like I was driving, I got to St. Louis and then as soon as you hit that boundary, it popped up and said, hey, 70 is closed up here due to an accident. So I was able to divert. So it's sort of a pain to have, but it's actually pretty nice to have.
Okay. So from emergency management on the revenue side, pretty close with the auditor there, estimating $363,600 in revenue. That is a combination of the split with the city. Camden County pays us for hazmat coverage. We do have some miscellaneous income there as well. And then obviously our grant cycle with our emergency management, performance grants, homeland security grants, and then the LEPC, LEPD grant. So to keep in mind, there are a couple different funding mechanisms. The emergency management. The 52,900, that should be in the EMPG line, so it should move down one. And then the top one should be. So that pays for half the salaries for our EM staff. The other half of that, of course, is split between city and county. The regional homeland security grants, those are the funds that support the hazmat team and the other various public safety interests such as the Mobile Emergency Operations Center and all of the equipment in there. We do have a preliminary award. I believe that preliminary award did not fund one of the radio projects, so that number's probably going to be a little bit more in the $200,000 range. But we don't have a final award on that yet. That's just a preliminary rumor, so we'll leave that as is. And then the LEPC, LEPD grant, we also have a preliminary award there of 10,500, but that also has not been finalized, so we'll leave that as is. And those will probably need to be budget adjustments next year, so. Questions on the revenue side?
No.
On the salary side, again, half of that is being paid for. Half of that is being paid for, that's a split cost between us and the city. You will notice that there's not a lot of savings there from when the merger has occurred, but you'll see that further down the line in the health insurance pieces. So, you know, I see the auditor has different numbers than what we have, and I think those are maybe based on historicals. But remember, only Tracy's salary is going to be funded out of these budget lines, so it's really just a one-person cost for social security, logger surf, and health and dental. So I don't know what those true numbers actually end up being, but they're different than what the, I would assume that the operator has in there. Questions on any of the personal services?
So how are we doing that with the portions that are going through EMS?
Yep, so there will be, we'll pay the salaries out of, for the two chief officers out of the EMS fund, and then there will be a transfer from the EM fund to make the EMS portion whole for the.
That'd be a different line. Where it's coming from, not specifically salaries then?
It is included in that salary piece. Or no, sorry, it's down here in the transfers out in the reimbursed personal services.
The 28,565 number. It's also being split with the city.
It's a little confusing how to put into the budget. There's a separate grant document that really kind of outlines how that money flows. It's just some of the ways that we have to shift this around to get it to match our documents versus what the state requires for compliance. Talking about materials and supplies, I have a couple areas that I just want to visit here about. So the first one being hazmat response. So the hazmat team is a group of volunteers that volunteer under the county's workers' comp insurance. One of the issues that we have there is those folks go into what is termed immediate danger to life and health environments or IDLH environments. And those environments require the suits and the breathing apparatus and all of those sorts of things. Well, because of that function, we have a bunch of requirements that we have to meet under NFPA, which are the nationwide standards governing those types of operations. And one of the things that we have not been meeting are physicals, annual physicals. And that is a very big pinch point for us. We did apply for a grant to get those physicals covered. However, due to current political environments at the federal level, that money was not available. So unfortunately, those physicals are pretty intensive. They draw blood, they do EKGs, they make sure everybody's fit to wear those respirators. And to bring those folks on site, the quote that we have is about $20,000. And they have done this previously under the grants and it's been right in that $20,000 range. I have talked with our partners at the fire department. They are required to have all of their staff go through this, so we're going to hopefully work out a deal to piggyback while those folks are here and catch everybody and have some savings hopefully. But I do believe that we need to add that $20,000 into hazmat response for those physicals. So the total number would be 26,200.
Is that per year that we do that or is that just a?
It is an annual thing. We test them, not only their physical health, but they get a blood draw to make sure that they're not exposed to, you know, heavy metals and those sorts of things while doing the hazmat work, so that we can start treatment, you know, if they do have an issue, instead of waiting for some catastrophic event to hit our workers' comp further down the line.
Is any, is this, you buy 100% of it or only a part? In other words, can our own health department do the blood draws and some of the other stuff that they're going to do?
I would have to check into that. I know that to meet the NFPA standards, you have to have a certain level of training to perform these, like, you know, it's not like we could have a paramedic go and do these types of physicals.
No, I was thinking our health.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know the answer to that. That's something that we can certainly look into.
I think it's a good idea to check into it, so.
Certainly, certainly.
And this is required?
It is required, yeah.
How do we get around it before?
Well. Yes, we have previously done it on grants, but it has not been done consistently. And I guess we can all debate the merits of not doing it consistently, but this is one of those areas where as we start digging into things, there's a gap, and it's a gap that I think that we need to fill.
Yeah, so the, a lot of these guys that are volunteers, they're members of other agencies like fire districts and stuff, so do they have the physical they do through that that may qualify?
Yeah, I think that's definitely something to look at. The issue is, my understanding of the quotes from the companies that come on site, it's really about the time that they spend on site, not the amount of physicals that they do. So if they're here for two days, it's $10,000 a day or whatever the, you know, their actual breakdown is. So if we can shorten the number of days that we're here, great, but, you know, if we can get all the team members through in one day, it doesn't necessarily mean if we cut one person off that we're going to save, you know, 500 bucks for their physical. It's by the hour, not necessarily by the exam.
Eric, was there a, I can't remember now because I'm on the. Oh, let me see, but I thought there was a, it was a different physical from the firehouse physical because it was hazardous materials. It's a hazmat.
They do the additional blood testing, but the actual physical workup itself, the x-rays are all part of it, I think. I think it's just the heavy metal testing that is the piece that's different. We'll continue to explore ways, but I would just like to put that in there to make sure that we get it done, one way or another. And then the two other pieces that I have are communications and internet. So historically, as you can see, those two budget lines have not been utilized. And where this comes back to is the infrastructure at South Ridge. So in order to connect South Ridge to the county network, there are copper wires that run back and forth, and that is what allows us to pass data. Irrespective of internet connections and all the other things, in order to get on the internal network, we have to have those connections. Those connections are unfortunately ungodly expensive, $3,500 a month-ish. And then on top of that, we have the internet connection at South Ridge, which is everything outside of our network, and that is about $800 a month. EMS has been obviously historically paying for 100% of those services. Now, I'm not saying that it needs to be split 50/50, but it is a dual-purpose facility, so I believe that some of that cost should be shared. What amount that is, I'll defer that over to you, but there is some cost that has been 100% paid for out of EMS funds. Now, we can argue that there's one or two people that work in EM and, you know, there's, you know, anywhere from eight to 10 people in the building at any time working on EMS, but there is some cost and it is probably to be shared.
So in the past, you absorb, EMS absorbed the cost?
Maybe it was a fair number way to do it.
Yeah. And I don't know how those calculations are made. You know, I don't know how you split those bills out. Is it on a per person basis? Do we know?
Not with the internet communications, like just per building.
So.
I'd say come up with what you think.
So maybe we'll sit down and look at those and put that in there. So, you know, splitting it 50/50 was 8,500 and 6,000. I think that's probably a little extreme. I don't know what you want to put in there for a placeholder, but I'll defer that over to you and I'll be happy with whatever on that. The rest of our operating funds remain about the same. For total materials and supply expenditure of 71,366 plus the 20,000 for the physicals and whatever number for the communications and internet piece. I think that is pretty much it from a EM standpoint.
No, we haven't. I mean, this is all new. Nothing unforeseen really popped up that.
No, I think it's all pretty consistent. The one thing that, you know, I know that there's been some talk on and we don't have to get into it here, is where that cost share sits and that legacy MOU and how we want to move about that moving forward. Currently, it's basically 25% of the salaries of the position. Currently, it's basically 25% of the salaries of the positions, and that number has not But it does not include any of the other expenses. So that's, you know, something that I'll put back on your else plate and take direction on 91%. But that's it for the EM side.
117.
Couple of pieces of information here. You guys should have a salary update in your email form. For reference. A fee schedule for next year. I'll get you one, but I didn't make enough copies. I should probably have something to reference. All right, I guess we can start on capital requests. Well, I guess start on sales tax revenue. We'll go through the revenue piece and we'll get to the capital request from you. Let's start on 118. So sales tax revenue projecting flat at 3.39 million. I believe this year, if it holds on pace for just the last month here, should be right at that number. Surplus properties estimating 60,000 for the sale of two ambulances. Interest, obviously, as we see interest rates start to roll back and some of our contingency funds are a little bit lower, anticipate a lower number there at 75,000, which is in line with where we're forecasting to be this year. We do still have $50,000 outstanding in reimbursement from the community development block grant for EMS headquarters, and I'll leave that to finance and the auditors on how they work through recouping that from the city. First responders, that is the fee that we pay to Jeff City Fire and Cole County first responders for responding to our calls for assistance. Capital lease, that is the medical equipment lease with Stryker. We are in year four of 10 on that deal, and that number is consistent for the next, for that 10-year period. The 911 system, that is our portion with the city that we fund the 911 center. I believe the sheriff and I split that one-thirds, two-thirds. And then the tax increment financing that we pay for the various TIFs around town. Oops, sorry. I skipped it all the way around. So total estimated revenues of 6 million and some change. Questions on the revenue side of it? This is just the sales tax piece. And then on the appropriations, like I said, we talked about the first responders, capital lease, 911 system tax increment financing, so that contractual services, relatively unchanged, 584,000 and $60. Here's where we get into a little bit of a change. So the first thing on the capital outlay is the $678,000 for ambulances. Those ambulances are actually done. Finance is working on cutting a check, so that charge will actually move into the 2025 budget and that number will be zero, as Jay and I have kind of talked about that. As far as our capital requests, obviously, we talked a little bit yesterday about the South Ridge remodel and where that project sits. I just don't know, I don't have enough information on cost, timelines, options to really feel strongly about holding $500,000 in capital to do that project this year. I think there is still an avenue where we do get it done this year, and that is if the architects come back, price is decent, we have a good year going as far as sales tax and revenue through the first part of '26, maybe we go ahead and say, okay, cash flow's good enough that we're okay to do that project. Because of all of those unknown, for budget purposes, I've gone ahead and rolled that back and cut that capital request out. And instead, I'm asking for 250,000 in capital for a list of various projects that we'll come up with here at the beginning of the year. So obviously, we had Plan A, and this is kind of a pivot to Plan B. I don't know what those projects actually are going to be yet, so just looking for a placeholder. And that placeholder number is something that allows us to be in a positive cash flow, and that's where that kind of number comes from. So in total, that would drop our capital improvements request down to $365,000. That is that $250,000 plus these other items that we had already identified, a radio service monitor, mobile radio replacement, and some command vehicle equipment. The big thing here is this radio service monitor is both an expenditure, but something that is of very big value to all of our public safety agencies. All of our portable radios require servicing and recalibration at a certain period of time where they don't work effectively. In order to send that out and get them recalibrated, it's about $800 a pop. So I don't know how many portable radios the sheriff has, but I would say a couple hundred.
Oh, yeah, probably.
Yeah. So you start doing the math, you know, he's got a couple hundred, we have 50, you know, you start doing all the math, a couple bucks a pop every couple of years by buying this equipment, doing it all in-house. We're going to save money. And then for other agencies who would want this service done, we could come up with a fee structure to help pay for this investment and charge them for using the device and calibrating their radios, so.
So our fire districts?
Fire districts, Jeff City Fire, PD, you know, all the hazmat radios, you know, I think there's a bank of 100 radios just on the mobile emergency operations center in and of itself. So it's a big number upfront, but I think we'll recoup that over the lifetime of the piece, so just wanted to point that out. Total appropriations out of the sales tax revenue obviously matches 6,239,01. Any questions about revenue or appropriations out of sales tax? Moving over to the enterprise fund. Training revenue, holding steady at 30,000. This has been, you know, kind of an area that we're getting more and more traction in. This is all of the classes that we teach in the community and also the tuition for EMT class. So that has been something that the training division's been working hard on, and they're having good success in creating that revenue to help fund some of our operations. We also have some other miscellaneous revenue in here. We charge folks when they request medical records, you know, law firms and those sorts of things. So total miscellaneous income is $39,000. And then we kind of get into the meat and potatoes. So in front of you, you have a proposed 2026 fees for service rate. As we'll get into in here in just a few minutes, we are going to experience some significant increase in operational costs due to personnel services, insurance, medical supplies, all the things that we're well aware of that are going to be going up. So there's a couple of different strategies. When we talk about implementing fees for service and changing the services used, one of them is to increase the base fees. And so basically, that is based on the level of service that we provide. So if we come do an IV, do an EKG, give you medicine, that falls into a base fee, right? That costs $2,200 for that service. And then on top of that, for the operational piece, we charge a loaded miles fee. So for every mile that we transport you, there's a fee that is added on top. When we talk about strategies for how to calculate those fees, some operations tend to increase their mileage fees at a bigger clip and keep their base fees at less of a rate, and then some are the inverse. The issue that we get into when you raise transport mileage is that if you live further in the county, you're going to pay a larger bill than your counterpart who lives in the city just by the amount of mileage that we're going to drive you from your emergency to the hospital. It seems a little unfair when we're talking about raising these prices because of operational costs across the board. So for 2026, I'm proposing a 6% to 7% increase on the base fees that we charge because our base operational costs are going up. If this were due to fuel or maintenance or, you know, other related, you know, mileage cost, then we'd probably go about it the other way. But because this is an across-the-board piece, we're going to go with the base fee increase and the mileage will increase by 50 cents. So that fee schedule is in front of you. I don't know if that needs to be on the agenda to adopt or we can adopt that here. The other piece of this is, and that is for the self-pay private insurance. As we've talked about before, CMS rates are set by CMS. There is no flexibility. They pay what they pay. Those rates are increasing by 2%, and those new rates for 2026 are on page two of that So with that in mind, I've gone back and really kind of looked at the third quarter call volume, where we're at. And the last thing that I want to do is be over aggressive with our revenue. So I'm going to request that we drop the forecasted revenue to 5.8 million, and that gives us plenty of room to be consistent across the board, and we should have no problems meeting that revenue expectation.
So going to 5.5, 2 million to 5.8?
I had initially forecasted 5.9, but that was about mid-year, and we had a really good reimbursement for the first half of the year. It's cooled off just a little bit, so I don't want to overforecast revenue and end up in a deficit. So just going to roll that back just a little bit.
Do you keep track of what CMS would have been had we, you know, what did we lose by having them as a customer versus having somebody else?
Yeah, we do. Those are contractual adjustments on our income sheets that we do keep track of that number. I just have to go back and pull it. It's significant.
I guess it would be. I mean, because on the average, maybe a half?
One-third.
One-third?
Yeah. So continuing down the revenue lines, $26,000 for ambulance standby, so that's when we provide ambulance coverage for various sporting events or activities around town. And then the GMT reimbursement. So of note, as we signed last week, we did receive a little bit of a windfall in GMT for this upcoming cycle. So that revenue piece is going to be 427,632.
What was that number again, please?
427,632.
Instead of the 80?
Correct. And then the debt collections, which are the funds recouped from past due, ambulance bills hold steady at about 24,000. That reimbursement in personnel services, that is the transfer in from the EM side for the two positions. And then the transfer in is the amount of transfer from sales tax to balance the operating fund at total estimated revenues of 8.7 million, but obviously, those get adjusted with adjusting the fee down and the GMT money coming up. I didn't do that final number, so that final estimated revenues will be a little bit higher. Questions on the revenue side?
So increasing our base fee and the mileage, where does that put us, I mean, in comparison to, say, MU and?
It's really kind of hard to find that data. What we kind of use as the benchmark is there's been legislation tried to be passed to control some of these costs, but also get insurance companies to pay more of the weight. And the legislation that continues to be pushed through the legislature but has not been passed yet is really 350% of the CMS rates, and we are well within that range. So it is a very difficult question when we compare ourselves to other services, just because I believe that we hire, you know, this is no shot at anybody else, but the service level that we provide to the community is at one of the highest levels for any ground agency in the country when you consider the blood products, the ventilators, the ultrasounds, all of the things that we are bringing to the patient. I believe that that is justified in charging a higher fee for that service. And unless you can really put two very like-minded services together in the same area with the same economic factors, it's really hard to compare apples to apples.
But you kind of get there, this 350% of CMS, it equates back to that one-third number that you read before.
Correct.
In a sense, roughly.
Yes, exactly. And I think that 350% number is important because if that legislation does ever make it through, we don't want to be at a place where we have to completely roll back our fees that we've been charging. So being in and around that number, I think, is a good barometer of where we actually need to be. Okay. All right. Moving over to the expenditure part. As we have discussed, in order to be compliant to House Bill 567, we've had to make some adjustments to our, to our pay scale, and that is taking the entry-level EMTs from 1375 to $15 an hour to be compliant. And what we've done there is because that kind of resets the bottom of the pay scale, it has some potential to create a it has some potential to create a lot of very tight space for everybody above them. So in keeping that pay scale separation, we've gone ahead and redone the steps for EMT, but then we've applied a 2% increase to the paramedic captain, battalion chiefs, and deputy chief pay scale above it to relieve that tight area that would be created otherwise. Again, this is something that we are being mandated to implement. And on the back end, those numbers take the salary line to the salary straight time to 3,52,197. It has no impact on our part-time because our part-time rate is not changing. It was already compliant. The overtime will go to 1,325,081. The next few lines are unchanged, but then social security on that would increase to 376,941. And the retirement, 502,522. I did not do the total math. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I believe it was about $160,000 increase to the Personnel Services to implement the plan.
So on a 24-hour shift, how many hours can they work that? Because obviously we don't want somebody there for 24 hours and working all the time and then being, working on somebody. I mean, you want them to be alert, ready to go. So we probably require them to have some sleep, some rest in there at some point.
Correct.
What is that requirement? Four hours, six hours, eight hours? Is there a magic number?
It's not a magic number. we have various policies in place that allow them to take themselves out of service if they are feeling fatigued. And that is a four-hour block where they would go down and have rest and their calls would be, another ambulance would either be repositioned or their calls would be passed to the next due unit. But globally, we operate at a level to where we don't really get into their working 24, the 24 hours. We manage that by the number of resources that we have available. So there's always built-in time. So we don't have a, if you're up for, you know, eight hours, you get four hours of rest. We don't build it in that way.
So if you're in there for 24 hours, so you're, at some point, you're going to be, where I'm going with this is we got 48-hour shift. So if we basically give them a four-hour lunch hour, because, you know, a normal work week is five, nine-hour days essentially, and you have a one-hour lunch hour. So is there a way we can work that with the way we do this? I just, there's got to be a way to do this because the the minimum wage that should not be affecting our overall salary or making us do all these adjustments.
I understand where you're going with that. I will tell you that that has already been adjudicated on a national level and agencies have been penalized very heavily for not paying in those situations.
I'm not, what do you mean not paying? I'm not making them stay there. They can go sit in their car. They can drive home. They can do whatever you can do on your lunch hour. If I'm requiring you to stay at work, yes, I agree. We do have to compensate you. I don't, that's what I'm saying, is this is your lunch hour.
The unfortunate piece of that would mean that they would not be available for?
They'll be on call and if called in.
It would be significant.
They're not available for emergency if they're fatigued and they request their four hours off. So I'm just trying to find a way to work around that rather than making these wholesale changes. So this is the thing I'm throwing out there.
I think every change in minimum wage that comes along because of statute change, it has to affect us or affect us. We can't get around it.
These are?
I mean, and, you know, you can't have somebody on a 24-hour shift but tell them that four hours in there, we're going to make you leave and not get paid. We can't do that.
You do that every day with our nine-hour day people. We tell them to go home for their lunch hour. We're not paying them, so we do that with them.
Why don't they walk out the door to go for that lunch hour? Do we grab them by the collar and drag them back and say, you've got to take care of this person that's dying?
We're not going to do that with these guys either. That's what I'm saying. No, we're not.
There are times we do.
No, if they're fatigued, we're going to tell them they're not, you can go take your four hours rest. You have to get some rest. So it's you're ready to go to take care of people. So this is the exact same thing as letting somebody go on lunch. We're not grabbing them and making them come back.
No, it most certainly is. You see the ambulances at the grocery stores. You see the ambulances at the restaurants.
Not if they're fatigued.
They're on call.
They're not, they're not fatigued.
They are working.
That's not if they're fatigued. They're out of service. They are out of service. Am I right or wrong? They're out of service and they take other people to fill it. So.
We're getting back to that argument. I'm not going to pay people to sleep. That's, this guy who used to sit here says, I'm not going to pay anybody to sleep. Yes, you are, if that's.
And we do.
I know we do.
And I was long saying, when we first took over the service too, was it crazy about it? We even went to the eight and 12-hour.
You want to be the only ambulance district in the state that does this, is what you're saying.
I don't know.
Nobody else is going to do it.
I'm not worried about what everybody else does.
Well, you're not. You're not worried about, there's another 100 districts out there and we're one that doesn't. You think we're going to be able to hire people under those conditions?
They're still getting the same pay. We're not changing their freaking pay.
You're trying to get under overtime is what you're trying to do.
No, I'm trying to keep from having to adjust this because of a minimum wage law that should not affect our people making $50,000 a year. Minimum wage is $30,250 a year, something like that. This, this is well over minimum wage. That is not what minimum wage.
How did you get that $30,000 number? You multiply?
2,040 times the minimum wage.
2,040, that's the key. We don't have an ambulance worker that's down at 2,040. They're closer to what, 30?
50, 2,800 and some change.
28.
And that's how we figure it. We take their yearly salary and back it in. I'm not trying to get around anything. I'm trying to get around what this law did. If we were that worried about it, then we should have been paying them this start with. We should have been paying them $50,000 and change to cover what difference it made from the get-go.
I disagree with you.
And we've made a lot of adjustments from when we took over the service. And there's, we've tried to be very competitive. I'm not sitting there saying that they're not worth it. I'll sit there and fight for every employee that we have. We're going to do that. So this drives me nuts, and we can't find a way or that this wasn't caught before it got passed because we understand that there's other districts that, like fire districts, were somehow cut out of it.
The fire districts are not subject to federal labor standard act.
Somehow they're carved out of it.
Correct. And unfortunately, it is very specific and we do not meet those requirements. Same with the Sheriff's Department. They also have carved out.
And I understand that too, and that's why I was trying to be creative with how we did this instead of having to make these changes. So, and thank you for finding a solution to it. This came up to us too. Sitting around at night, you think about these things. You try to figure it out. Right, wrong, or indifferent, or maybe if it spurs enough conversation, it finds another way around it. Then, okay. If not, then this is the way it's going to be. So.
Well, you said a key word that's been adjudicated federally.
The, the, trying to have people at work but not paying them for the entire time that they are.
But I'm not saying they have to stay at work. I'm allowing them to leave. If they want to go license their car, if they want to go sleep, if they want to do whatever.
I understand the.
We can move on. It's not going to go anywhere. I sent them a piece about it. I threw it out there. Nobody else wants to play with it, so taking my ball and going home.
Sounds good.
That's the cowboy way.
Sometimes we've got to do that. It's been 37 years.
Continuing down, so like I said.
Where were we?
Personnel Services.
I don't know. You got to solve it.
So total for Personnel Services, that number will increase by about 160 and some change. I didn't do the exact calculation or write it down here. But everybody should have that in their ear. Refunds, these are refunds where people pay their EOV before it's actually fully adjusted and we owe that money back. And then bank service charges, professional services. This is Dr. Stille's contract as our medical director. Fire station rent, that is the rent that we pay for our facilities with our partnerships, the county fire districts. And then obviously the GMT fees, that will go up. Remember, we have to pay money to get money. So because the front number was so large, the expenditure to get that money is 147,668. As far as materials and supplies, not a whole lot of issue there. Obviously, there will be some adjustment to the internet and communications line based on whatever split out we have. The communications line, the auditor had 11,500. I'm requesting 15,000. Those are all of our cell phone lines and our data lines. So all of the data that connects our trucks to computer aided dispatch and the GPS and all that's done through cellular, so that number probably will not decrease. Totals, materials and supplies, operating costs, 1,573,239, which is about a $50,000 increase of what we're projected to do this year. So pretty conservative, I believe, there. My next point of question, and I don't necessarily want this to come off as a negative thing, but the computer services charge, which is the fee that we are charged for IT service, apparently is increasing from 51,120 to 118,173, so basically a doubling.
Big line.
You know, while I certainly understand the increase, I guess, you know, when I look at this at 118,173, I could have my own IT person for that. So.
Well, there's, you can have a person, but he won't be able to buy any software.
Well, fair. You know, so I won't pretend to be educated on what all is covered in this fee. It just seems very heavy.
Brian addressed that quite a bit.
I think you should say, show me. You're now from Missouri, South Dakota, California, but you're Missouri now, so say, show me to Brian.
So, you know, like I said, I don't know what that number is. If that's the number, it's the number. So be it, but under protest, I guess.
I mean, we're getting, we're having to swallow it too. I mean, the cybersecurity thing is getting even tougher to swallow, but it's pretty important that we protect ourselves and then a lot of these other leases and stuff are the subscriptions, I guess, not leases.
And then the transfer fund is 135,340. So again, as I've discussed every year, those are funds that are transferred back into general revenue to pay for our assistance from finance, the honor's office, legal services, so on and so forth. Of note, those fees are charged to both sides. It's charged 3% to, to sales tax and then 3% or a fixed rate on the operating expenses. While certainly don't have that big of an argument this year, as we continue to see a flat sales tax, the increase in use tax, and, you know, operating expenses continue to go up, I would just like to keep in mind that those two fees, administrative fees do, you know, have a real impact on our ability to do other capital projects. So, you know, I think if we're going to pay the fees, fine. But then, you know, I guess my request would be, you know, moving forward when we have large capital projects, looking at some of that capital or, sorry, the use tax money to offset some of those items. You know, one-time purchases, those sorts of things. So it's balancing act. I get it. But I just wanted for the fourth year to be on the record about the admin fees.
Okay. Use tax is unencumbered, so I've talked to the chair. It can be used this year.
Well, you know, it's my feeling that, you know, pots like that are usually best spent on one-time capital purchases. So as, as we develop some of these projects and maybe that's something we get down the line for, you know, a communication center or maybe a station out on Route C or something like that, maybe that's when we have those conversations of where those funds can be used. And I think that probably balances out the year-to-year use of the admin fees. Total appropriations, obviously this number would change, but 8,743,76. And again, the budget was rebalanced with the increase in salary costs. And there is a positive cash flow in contingency on the sales tax side with all of these changes accounted for, which is really the barometer that I use to understand our financial health. So.
Maybe you drilled into those 7, 800, 900 bills that were prefiled Monday to see if there's another increase.
Well, you know, unfortunately, the, you know, we're really good about being notified about bills that, you know, pertain to EMS. I would hazard that when 450, 576 or whatever the number is went through, they didn't necessarily think, oh, this is something that, you know, really impacts, you know, public safety or EMS. So we did not get the memo on that. But yes, we do get memos on other bills that have been prefiled. I'd actually got one yesterday, so.
I can commend Chief Hoy. He is passionate about his budget and where every penny goes and where it comes from. So he's very knowledgeable of their total operations. And this last change, the last few days on minimum wage, he's dropped things and refigured items for us going forward, so.
Things are rough.
It's rough the way they have to schedule and this significant, you know, 9% increase.
We're going to have to deal with the 24-hour shifts. We tried different ones. It just don't work.
Find out in the hot seat.
Oh, it's cooled off by now, right?
I guess.
Hey, Ralph.
Eric, it's so hard to act.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, when mom and dad fight.
All right, gentlemen, this should not take long. You ready?
Yes.
Okay. So let's talk about the line item budget, then we'll talk about the capital request. So I met with Jay and, by the way, thanks a lot, Jay. I appreciate your insight and feedback. There is only two line items I really want to address, salaries. And as I understand it, so two percent is the recommended COLA increase, correct? And I think, and I'd have to go back and look, I assumed three percent, I believe. And back then, that was at the time when I was in August, when the cost of living was about three. That's why I would use that total. But I understand with the, is it the revenue streams that you're projected to go down?
That and the other key point here is the salary study that's pending.
Yeah, and I want to address that too.
I mean, if we didn't have a salary study pending, my recommendation for a cost of living increase would have more than likely been different. But with that pending, I did not want to to recommend something that could negatively or make any disparities worse from what could come from a salary study.
And my only comment is, I certainly agree with that. I think that's a good approach, so I'm totally fine with that. My only question is, so if revenues are projected to go down, but I understand the assessor has put in place adjustments for assessments to be different in some cases, higher. So would that not increase the county pot?
The property taxes going up, it's sales tax that we've assumed flat.
And it's not going to be offset?
Not, no, not exactly.
Okay.
We get very little.
G R gets very little.
We get very little of that.
Yeah, I just wanted a perspective. I didn't understand.
So the use tax is going up, the property tax is going up, the assumption that we used for sales tax is basically flat.
Yeah.
Is there, could you push that and it be maybe a one percent increase? Yes, I've been a little more conservative at this stage.
And I would actually agree with that, Jeff. I told you before, I'm a cheapskate. I'm very frugal. I think you should always plan for the worst and hope for the best. So I'm fine with that. So let's go down to meeting travel and dues. Now, I had upped that quite a bit because I would like to get my other two deputies to our annual conference for mandatory continuing education training so they can get their credits. And for the last several years, our state association has been very aggressive about encouraging us to bring some of our deputies to get them trained, and I certainly agree with that. And for example, our annual conference is going to be down at the lake in Martha's Vineyard. And so I was going to bring all three. Margarita Bill. You were just there. You were there while I was in Martha's Vineyard.
A piece, I'll go with you.
Yeah, okay. But anyway, that's the reason for that increase, and I don't think I communicated that to Jay.
No, we, yeah, we talked about that. I'm comfortable with going along with that.
And more and more.
The forty three hundred then?
Forty five, yeah, from the thirty two hundred to forty five.
And more and more, what I've discovered in the last three years, I'm about the only public administrator at our annual conference and training that only brings my chief deputy. Most of the public administrators bring their entire staff. But I have, I mean, I don't like doing that too often because I don't like to close the office under regular work day. But I do feel like that my deputies need some of this training that they offer every year, so that's why I bump that. And other than that, if there's any other items you have a question about, those were the only two I wanted to comment on. But real quick, going back to the salaries, I do want to tip my hat to you three because I think you all were very open minded, collegial and cooperative with the salary study and listening to us other public officials. And it has certainly helped me, this salary study. And I think it's going to help me in the future in terms of educating me on how to better budget for what, you know, I should really be budgeting for as far as salaries. And it will also give me, it will segue, it will allow me to come up with a program, I think, for my three deputies over and above their performance reviews where I can set objectives and tie those objectives to the, you know, recommended salary increase without arbitrarily asking you all every year for a mere increase of like seven hundred and fifty bucks. I have something to back that up with. So that was very helpful. I appreciate your honest involvement in that. Okay, are we ready to go to capital?
We are, but I would just make, this is just an observation or report to the public in some respects. You're the only elected official with an office in the courthouse?
What about pretrial services?
Not elected.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
And some people might say, well, you know, why? And I would answer, giving you some cover here. You do a lot of traveling up the steps to the various courtrooms all the time.
Yeah.
And since you are in the courthouse, you have the security that you probably need. True?
Yeah, that is true. That's a good point. Some of my colleagues are forced to work elsewhere and they're quite vulnerable to aggressive, isolated family members of their clients. And they have been threatened, you know, and a whole bunch of other stuff. And so I do feel secure there. I've actually been in court before where somebody had made an aggressive move towards me and the marshal had to step between us.
Okay, that's all I wanted to mention there because, you know, we thought about you being moved and what would be the results.
Yeah. And I told you, I'll go wherever you all think I need to be. I prefer the courthouse. But, you know, I'll do whatever you all think is best.
Okay.
And I do interact with the judges, not only Judge Green, but all, what do we got now, five judges? Six. I deal with all of them in one way, shape or form, and I definitely deal with their clerks and their staff. And there's a lot of interaction between my office and their offices.
Okay.
So on page one twenty five, it lists out the capital improvement request of two thousand, eight hundred and thirty six dollars. And Ralph, Ralph has the specific details.
You got it?
One twenty five, yeah.
So actually, there's two items, the first of which is my computer equipment. And here about four and a half or five months ago, Brian told me all of my equipment was passed their shelf life, for lack of a better term. And he recommended that I get all of my work stations and my laptop and my docking station replaced. The total cost will be sixty one hundred dollars. And that would include my laptop that I use in my home office.
And that would be out of the three hundred and forty thousand dollar line and everything, where we show the the information systems, the equipment replacement and upgrades.
The next final capital request, I would like to reconfigure my workspace. I haven't done that for about three years. I'm trying to get more service providers to come to my office, at least for quarterly care plan reviews. Now, I'll go to them for the annual assessments, but for the quarterlies, there's just so many and it requires so much travel. So what I would like to do is move Caitlin, my chief deputy, back into the big office with the other two deputies. I will take over where I used to be in that bigger office, and I'll put a small conference room table in there and chairs. And that's kind of the nature of this request, totaling twenty eight hundred and thirty five dollars and seventy cents. Now, I would like to point out, I'm quoting furniture here, which is about half of that total request. I am always checking for surplus furniture. If I can get surplus furniture, I'd just soon do that. But if I can't, if there's none available when I'm ready to reconfigure, this is what it would cost to buy it. And I'm, you know, looking for a conference room table, not huge or anything like that, but something that will accommodate maybe, you know, four to six people. And by the way, all of the furniture in the courthouse that belongs to the county, right? It's not the judges or. In other words, if I come across a conference table that I never see used, is it inappropriate for me to ask somebody? If I can procure that?
That's a county sticker on there, and I don't know if there's a state.
No, that's a good point. There ought to be an asset sticker.
Some of those TVs might belong to somebody else. I don't know.
Yeah, but I'm talking furniture. Yeah.
All right, you got one in mind, I'm thinking. So see if there's a sticker on it.
Why don't you just be nice and ask them if you can borrow?
Oh, I will ask Judge Green.
I'll stop you walking around with stickers over there.
But anyway, my total request for capital is eighty nine, thirty five, seventy, which is replacing all of the computer equipment and reconfiguring the office space and getting some office furniture added if nothing in surplus is available. Jay, did I leave anything?
No, I think you are good.
Okay.
Jay, you might have told us this. I'm just going to go in general here. We got the two percent in there. I think you've mentioned a couple of times that if we didn't have the salary study going on, that you very possibly would have had one where in there. So did you have any kind of a placeholder or anything in there that we would use for salary adjustments?
So if you go back and I gotta find the right report that I'm thinking of. If you go to number thirteen, it's the page with my signature on there. The difficult piece, and again, not everyone is paid out of the general fund, but a large portion of payroll is paid out of general fund. In my mind, where you need to kind of balance things is looking at the operating revenues and the operating expense. You don't want that to be negative for too long. And actually, when I first started putting the budget together, I thought it was going to be negative. And so there's a little room there for some salaries. But when you do a salary increase, it's more or less in perpetuity as long as that employee is here. And it's not just your salary increase, it's your fringe benefits, your retirement, social security and things of that nature. So those are the things we kind of need to look at, but if there wasn't a salary study, would we have been, would I have been closer to two and a half percent or done something with a flat and a percent? Possibly, again, those employees that, we have a few of them that are making under forty thousand dollars with the increase on healthcare we had, that's an area where I've got some concerns. If you have an employee making thirty eight thousand dollars and insuring the family, there's not as much living expense left out of that, you know, to keep you going forward and paying other just life expenditures. Again, hopefully there's another spouse working or things of that nature that maybe one of the family members working for insurance and the other, you know, is for something else. But that's where my concerns are at.
You messed with the numbers that public works director sort of suggested of seven fifty?
I have not. We can, you know, we can run those type of scenarios.
And that really assists anybody under fifty thousand? Is that where the break?
Yeah, it's close to that. And again, I don't think we're there, but one of Jeff's favorite words I've already learned is you can't do consistently flats with percents without having pressure on compression pressure on on salary, you know, different salary classes and things of that nature. I'm hoping that that's addressed with the salary study. Salary studies I've seen in the past will kind of identify job titles and say, these appear to be more under market levels than these other salary titles. You know, we may have certain titles that were basically right on market, but we have others that are quite a bit below market. And hopefully those are the things being addressed in the salary study. Couple of questions for you, being the first time through. I've heard from several department heads, elected officials, that they would like to be involved in next week during the discussion when you all make your decisions on budget. They're concerned that they may not have two mornings set aside the entire time to sit in and listen or be here. And I don't have an answer, but is there any way that we structure how we go through this to have time slots without wasting your all's time? Because we moved through the last two days, we've moved through rather quickly on things. I don't know that it's going to take two days to get through everything based on what we've done the last two days. And then how do you, what's your thought on the best way to go forward? Is it me to have spreadsheets? Is it me to have spreadsheets with some of these revised numbers that we look at and we just work through those? I may be able to go into BSNA, into the system, and put the department revised requests that I'm comfortable with under the commission approved in line, knowing that they're not approved, but that you see those numbers and I print out new reports there?
You could reproduce the schedules that you've already done and have one more column that is, you call it the post twelve-three discussions, and then maybe explain the major differences between the last two columns. I think we were subtly agreed to a budget, but officially made in line.
Okay, so based on the last two days, is there scenarios or directions that you want me to estimate revenues or cost different than what we've done so far? And again, we can have those decisions next week, and we can run those different scenarios and bring that back to you. There is no, the next real official deadline that I think we need to hit is basically having the final budget approved by January fifteenth, and we have to wait to the end of the year, the first of the next year, to get some of those numbers of actuals to roll through to know how much we have to carry forward and to build in those contingency balances for the 2026 budget. And if you want to think about it, feel free to send me emails and I can, Rob and I can run different scenarios. You know, again, we've assumed the property tax increases were based on the new assessed The use tax is projected to go up from three point seven to four point, four million dollars, so that's about an eight point one percent increase. Our ARBA funds are going away, we've talked about that. Property tax was to be just under seven million, and that's based on a five hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase, or eight percent there. Our revenue.
That's probably too optimistic, because we're locked, you know, there's already guardrails.
Yeah, I worked with Debbie on those numbers of what the changes of the assessed value was and the rates and everything, so.
But we had, we had levy rollbacks.
And that's.
Of course, that's, well, no, that would be right now, so. There's some levy rollbacks.
I'll get you information on how those numbers were calculated and everything, so.
The general revenue, we have such a small number here, I don't know. I'm just trying to think about EMS and how for every dollar that's collected over there, sixty cents gets back, rolled back, that's already been done, so. It's probably modified a little bit differently than before because our sales tax is under what was projected. I guess if it's not too much work, a modification of the COLA to a hard number of X and a percent of X, X percent, let's say.
Okay.
And maybe use Public Works suggestion. Was it seven fifty and one, or seven fifty and something?
One percent and seven fifty.
One percent plus seven fifty. Okay. Help that lower.
And what we did for twenty-five was five hundred dollars and two percent, so we'll run that scenario of what those costs are and everything as well.
I got notes updating the salary schedules. So what does the commission schedule look like next week as we sit here today?
It has Tuesday and Wednesday blocked from eight AM to noon both days.
And he's got those locked days, has breakouts of.
No, they're just open, they're just total block. So Tuesday, we will have normal commission items, and then we can roll into the budget, but there's no set time.
For people to come in.
For people to come in.
So I would like just going from front to back, going through the review part, you know, if that helps them know when we're going through their stuff, or we can tell them, look, this is kind of when we're gonna do it, or if somebody's got something specific they want to come talk to us about, we can put them on the schedule.
You know, I just, I want to utilize your all's time the best.
Well, I do, but I don't want, like, an official sitting here for hours when we're not gonna get to.
I think, like Christie said, she has a meeting or conference next week, so.
So I don't.
If we can.
If you put it in by hour, and every quarter of an hour, put a different name there, maybe that will, I don't care, whatever.
We can work around times, too.
Yeah, but everybody's gotta be on notice, you might be called to come earlier or come late, but you could almost do a duplicate of what we did, and maybe you want to go in reverse order once we're first.
If we gotta jump around, that's fine, it's what it is, and we can work with people.
Just publish something that we have a guideline to go by.
Jessica, any thoughts?
They just want to be here, so we have to say no to their face.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, guys.
We shouldn't.
Stand at recess.
Stand at recess until four thirty PM.